Council meeting to order. Abby, please call the roll.
Mayor Walbe?
Here.
Councilmember Burches?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubello?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
And Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is proclamations presentations. We don't have any at this meeting. Item three is audience participation. Do we have anyone who would like to speak for two minutes regarding agenda items?
No, we do not.
That will move to item four, Benjamin Street 2024 Canal dredge, consideration of the necessity for the creation of a special assessment district for dredging and adopt a resolution to set a second public hearing. So four A is public hearing, so we'll open for a public hearing regarding the Benjamin Street dredging project. Yes, ma'am, come on up. Did you, remember you, is that you? Oh, oh, okay, sorry. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Your name and where you reside?
Hello, everybody. I'm Mark Hoderick. I live on the Benjamin Street Canal for 33 years now. So I was part of the dredging committee. I was also a part of the committee back in 2008 when we dredged. Did a, did a full dredge back then. And I don't know if anybody remembers that one, but it was quite a, quite a fight. So it took a year and a half to get the paperwork, and as you guys can all appreciate it, emails and meetings and paperwork, year and a half later, here I am. Probably when the high water receded in 2020 is when it really was noticeable and bad and smelly and a lot of debris gets caught in the canal and the weeds, and the neighbors were suggesting we dredge. And so because I had done it before, I said, well, I'll just do the same thing I back, did back in 2008. So back then, we did, well, we, we proposed to dredge the exact same area so we wouldn't have a fight with Eagle and with wetlands and whatnot, and we proposed to do the SAD as we did before as well. But as our application was going through, the SAD, which shows that everybody along the canal front has to participate equally, was expanded to include the rest of the street because of the lakefront park owners. And Bob Erie probably has some inside information on that, but that has now caused the rest of the street to put in for the section of the canal, the section of the street that has the canal in it that was not intended. But it is as it is. Here we are today. I had some visuals for you, but I didn't know that you didn't have the screen thing anymore. So anyway, here's, here's a picture of it. And it's almost full to the end of the lake now. The whole canal is almost filled in with sediment. And so we're proposing a two-step process. We're proposing to scrape the surface off. That'll get about a foot or two of the top sediment, the dry stuff, which is the easiest to remove. And then we're proposing to go and dredge a two-foot, 500 by 25-foot by two-foot-deep canal, uh, channel down the middle. I had some figures I was gonna put up too, but volume fits the budget. We could have dredged more, but we didn't want to overbudget it. We want to, I'm conscientious, conscientious of the neighbors. Most people are for it, but some people are not. So we didn't want to really make a crazy expensive dredge. And we're gonna dredge until all the funds are exhausted from the SAD. We plan to have no more funds left over. And I wanted to say thank you to my neighbors for their support and help, and also to the city officials that helped me through this too. And I'm here for any questions.
Okay. It's a public hearing at this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else regarding the public hearing? Anyone else before I close the public hearing? So four B is adopt of a resolution to create the special assessment district and to set a public hearing on September 3rd, 2024 to review 16th, September 16th, 2024, to review the assessment role, hear objections, and confirm the role, which would be at the next council meeting, again, September 16th, 2024. Mr. Vitale?
I'm just gonna mention that there were 26 lots affected here. There were 18 votes in favor, zero votes not in favor, and eight that didn't vote. So it looks like it has the support of the residents on the street. So I make a motion to, let me see how the exact way it should be read.
To adopt.
To approve the resolution to create the special assessment district for the Benjamin Street 2024 Canal District.
And set the public hearing for September 16th?
Set the public hearing for September 16th.
Support.
Mr. Vitale supported by Mr. Frederick, right? And it turned out to be about 75.7% actually.
Yes.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. One question on the August 20th notice that is attached, the one that was sent to the property owners and sent in a packet after the affidavit mailing. So it says, they do the math, and there's a discrepancy for, it says canal front parcel owner, $3,048 per parcel plus 148.47 for the waterfront parts equals $3,191.95. If you do that math and add 3,048 plus 148 dot 47, you end up with 3,196 dot 47, not 3,191 dot 95. Which I think was just, I think the math was done incorrectly. It's correct on our yellow memo.
Yeah.
So I think the math, I was just wondering about the, is that just a typo? That discrepancy in the notice, and does that impact anything we're about to do?
Mr. Erie?
I would ask the maker of the motion to identify the, the numbers that are on the, on our yellow sheet. Those numbers are accurate.
Yep, and that actually works out better for the residents by five blocks, basically. So I was just wanting to make sure that was the accurate set of numbers, not the numbers in the notice.
Mr. Vitale?
I would amend that as follows, that the 21 parcel owners on the canal shall be responsible to pay 3,043.49 plus 148.46 for a total of 3,191.95.
I'll support that. And the 20 parcel owners?
And the 20 parcel owners not on the canal will be responsible to pay 148.46.
Yep, I think the discrepancy came from using the 3,043 dot 49. It says 3,048 per parcel. So I think the discrepancy was from that. The addition is correct in the notice, just that number per parcel is incorrect by a small amount. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rubello?
Yeah, by the, by the photo, this, your, this canal is filled in a lot more, correct? I mean, that's almost up to the, the lake. I think you have one of the most unique streets in St. Clair Short's, if not the most unique street. And yeah, you, you, this, this is needed, okay? And I wanted to at least say to Mark, Mark, I know you, you, you really bust your tail on this stuff, and I, and I appreciate it, because I like this street for some reason. It sticks out my mind every day almost. And really thanks for all you do as a volunteer around the city too, okay? I know you're heavily involved with the parade, you're involved with the waterfront environmental committee. I know you like the water, and I suppose that's why you're sort of the front man. So thank you for all you do for St. Clair Short's.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, I think maybe another technical correction, but in the resolution part, the fourth, whereas the city council met on Monday, August 19th, at 7:00 PM per notice duly according to section 9.2, the city charter hearing all objections to the proposed improvement special assessment district created afraid of the costs thereof, and has heard all such objections. I think that's tonight's meeting, correct? Not August 19th?
That is correct.
It was on our prior agenda, wasn't it?
Yeah. It was, it said the public hearing was on the 19th, but yeah.
Right, so that should be September 3rd in the resolution. Okay. Outside of that note, I appreciate the residents taking on this project, because I've seen that as well in terms of how that sediment has built up over all those years, and just from the late action, just pushing more material in, especially again, onshore wind can deposit a lot, and that, and there's nowhere else to go. It's not like you got a, any circulation going on. Waves come in, dump material, and the water goes out, material stays. So I appreciate the residents taking that on and improving their neighborhood.
Move by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Frederick, to adopt the resolution to create the special assessment district for the Benjamin Street 2024 Canal District instead of public hearing, September 16th, 2024, read the assessment role and hear objection, confirm the role. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, seven to zero. Item five is fiscal year 25 carryover requests. Dustin?
Yep. Each year, as part of your end-of-the-year process, departments are allowed to carry over funds for certain projects and purchases with council's approval. The initial criteria has been established previously by council for funds to be carried over include, one, the project's last purchase was budgeted in the fiscal year 2324 fiscal year, and two, a sufficient balance was available in the account at year end to cover the amount of the carryover. And then also, three, kind of what we have also been looking at for the last few years, is trying to, any projects that did not get completed or did not start, we've been trying to add those into the next fiscal year's budget year rather than carrying over the funds. So these are those that did not get carried over to the next fiscal year. You'll see, and I'll have Renee kind of step up too, so if you have any questions, the finance director can answer some of these, but I'll kind of quickly go over the very first section, 101 General Fund. You'll see three revenue items along with eight expense items that carry over fund balance equals a total of 848,691. You'll see nine items that are in your major street fund expenditures, and then you'll see one underwater fund, three under storm, one under motor pool, and one under computer, which is actually on your agenda item tonight. So if you have any questions, feel free, myself and Renee are here to answer.
Questions. Mr. Rubello?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going through, all the math adds up and the deductions and every, we got everything set? I just want to make sure all the, all the adds up on here. I was gonna do it on my little calculator, but I'm not, I'll just ask you.
I double-checked it a couple times.
Okay.
As far as I know, it's all right.
Be here for a long time if I did it that way. So we generally do this one time a year, correct? I mean, this is.
Normally, the time of year we do this in September, either the first or second meeting.
Okay.
So that we can get these taken care of.
So we're on schedule for all of that as far as what we were doing last year and the year before. September is it. So we're basically just forwarding money from our, our last year's budget to this year. Anything that we might not have finished or haven't started, is that correct?
We want them to be at least started or at least in the planning stages. And if the money's left in 2324 budget and it's not in the 2425, we need the money moved forward in order to complete the project in the current.
Stuff that might not be quite finished.
Yep.
Okay.
And just to kind of piggyback off of Renee's answer, a lot of these projects, if you look here, you're gonna see they actually were done. They just weren't completed by June 30th. So for example, when you look here and you go 11-mile tip project, that project is done. You look at the alleys, you're like, oh, we did do that alley. But all those bills didn't come in by the June 30th deadline. So any work that happened on July 2nd, 3rd, 4th, it has to be billed to the year that the project occurred in. So you might even look at some of these and say, oh, that project is done, or we did spend that. We did, you're correct, but that was in July, which is technically the next fiscal year. So that's why some of this is being carried over, even though it's already been approved and spent.
Because I know we do these over the last few years, and this is, this is a normal, this is a normal activity that we do here.
Correct.
Okay. And you said all the math adds up on here and so forth, so I'll make a motion to approve the proposed FY 24-25 carryover request, BA 25-01 as presented.
Support.
Move by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, like Dustin said, like the majority, or actually, almost all these are projects that were already in flight, already approved, we've already sourced out. I think the only one that we haven't seen is the Kite Monroe lighting.
Lighting, yeah.
And that. So I don't know, Rob, do we have any update?
You'll probably see it from the beginning within the next month.
And within the next month? Okay. And because, did it already go up for bid? Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I need. Thanks, Renee.
That's good. Ms. Rusi?
Yes.
Okay. Good luck. God bless you. Move by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick, to approve the proposed 2425 carryover request as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is request approval of changes to Article 2 municipal civil infractions and related ordinances. Ms. Pike, and of course, I know that Councilman Karen has been processing this too.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, Councilman Karen has been very instrumental in helping us move this forward. If you remember, council at a work session last November discussed a shift to municipal civil infractions from what we currently do in most ordinances, which is misdemeanors. The reason for the, or the impetus behind doing that was the lack of consistency among the ordinances and the penalty clauses. It was also really to make the law equal, so the ordinance was, would apply equally. And then lastly was to expedite compliance. So we have worked diligently to bring together, if you could change the next map. So what we've done is to group infractions based on the impact. So again, if you recall, when the animal ordinance was being discussed, there was a consensus that we did not want a potentially harmful to animals or to people in ordinance that would not be a misdemeanor. But for those that are property compliance, those are where civil infractions really can be effective. So that was one of the reasons. We took the common language for the three types of penalty clauses, and we actually applied those across the many ordinances that you've been looking at. The review was conducted on all the chapters. So again, Councilman Karen was instrumental in going through all of the penalty clauses and making sure that we could make those more consistent. And then, so what we did was there were chapters where there were misdemeanors only. Again, these are going to be ordinances that are harmful to people or to animals. Those will always remain, or we are proposing will remain to be a misdemeanor. Where there are exceptions could be where there is an MCL reference. So for example, motor vehicle code has an MCL reference associated with it. So we would not, of course, adopt an ordinance that would be in violation or in conflict with state law. Where there are civil infractions only, this is where the penalty clause would state that there would be a civil infraction, and that every day would be another offense. So we've talked a lot about writing tickets, and how do we get compliance for things like long grass? This is where we could have, if somebody is not in compliance with the ordinance, could write them a ticket. The penalty clause says that the first ticket is a $50 violation. The second ticket could be a $250 fine, and then a third ticket could be a $500 fine. So every day could constitute a new violation. And then on the last slide, is there one more slide in that? Thank you. So the, here we have the misdemeanor only. This is kind of a chart of how the ordinances that we're proposing be changed. Those ordinances are in the motion for your packet. It is first and foremost a change to Chapter 1, Article 2, which is the municipal civil infractions ordinance, and then subsequent changes to all of the ordinances where the penalty clause is being proposed for a change. So I would like to answer any questions that you may have. Certainly, we can talk about the flow. But again, the three reasons or the three impetuses for bringing this before you is really, again, equal application, the consistent enforcement of the penalties, and expedited compliance.
Questions. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Denise, thank you for summarizing this whole host of changes that we're proposing tonight. So what I would just add to what Denise says, a few things. One of the importance of the consistency across the code of where, in the past, we had certain property cases that were misdemeanors, others could be civil infractions. And if it's property, maintenance of property, maintenance of the business, ought to be the same. And if it's not harmful, make it a civil infraction. And we believe by doing it that way, we can get to compliance faster. I do have an example on that that came to my attention. In April, we wrote a notice of violation, a final notice of violation on a business for the roof being in disrepair. That was being processed as a misdemeanor case. After 14 days, the roof wasn't repaired. Code enforcement started that process with the court to go down to be a misdemeanor. The paperwork finally came back to code enforcement to authorize the misdemeanor in middle of June, and the court date would have been in the middle of August. Fortunately for the, the business owner was responsible, actually had the roof fixed in May. So the repair was done, violation was taken care of, but we hadn't even gotten through starting the enforcement process yet because of this timeline we'd get when we have to do things as a misdemeanor. So it was good on that business. They did the responsible thing. Probably should have told us they were doing that, because then we wouldn't continue through the court process. But that's just an example of the time that we're looking to save by, for these property complaints to have the civil infraction, where they'll get the notice of violation, they got seven days. Either comply or come to code enforcement and say, hey, here's the issue, right? I'm not gonna get a new roof in seven days, right? But here's my timetable and work out something with code enforcement supervisor on that. So you get the initial violation, you've got the initial seven days. If you haven't replied to that, you'll get a final one. You got another seven days before a ticket's gonna get issued, and you still have the right within the court to dispute it. And you'll be given a court date, just no, just like a speeding ticket is. So we're not taking away anybody's right to dispute a claim, but we are looking to get faster enforcement. And also too of, when we get the complaints about, you know, from, you know, within a neighborhood of a problem property, and we tell them we've issued violations, but we're waiting on the court, well, if it's a property violation, we can move that along a lot quicker. And to say, hey, we've given them the citation, they're gonna get fined if they don't comply. You know, so we can actually push that enforcement and actually show the residents that something is being done with these property complaints going forward. So that's a real drive behind doing this, and also to just get the consistent language across. We had misdemeanor language that someday was, it was 93 days in jail, 91 days in jail, 90 days in jail. We never put anyone in jail, but.
Not to exceed.
Exactly. But it was all different in that. So that's another reason to get it all consistent. And then if state law does change in the future, that's all referenced within one paragraph in our code. So we only change it one place. We're not changing it in every individual chapter. There's another reason to simplify the code going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Well, I guess first off, I would definitely have to commend Councilman Karen for taking the initiative and taking this task on, not only for, you know, bringing this to everyone's attention, that this is something that needs to be done by actually making the effort to do it and putting in all the work. So, you know, I, I believe this really does not only increase the procedural efficiency that the city can now act with, but this also, I think, increases, just like you said, consistency and fairness. And it really makes the distinction between, it, it brings our ordinances more in line with what should be punishable as a crime, as a misdemeanor, people harm, animal harm, property harm, and what makes more sense and is more in line with what the issue actually is, a civil infraction. So I, I think that, because before it was kind of, it was very inconsistent now, you know, not only in terms of how many days or the fines, it was also just inconsistent what was being deemed a misdemeanor or being deemed a civil infraction with all the different consequences associated with that, both for us and for the person who is on the other end of it. So thank you to Councilman Karen for taking this on. And I guess I, a couple of questions. When this first was brought up, I had brought up a few concerns that we needed the city attorney's office to do a little research into making sure that we weren't conflicting with state law or federal law, any other regulations, things like that. That work's been done, correct, Bob?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
Yes, it has.
So for example, in like Chapter 2, where we're talking about the housing commission, which is created by federal law and governed by HUD, when we're making a violation of whatever that would be, that, that chapter, from a misdemeanor to a civil infraction, we are not in conflict with any sort of HUD regulation or federal law. So thank you for doing that work. And, and I spoke with Bob and John earlier today in terms of some of the certification pages in here. There are some that really do show what changes are being made in the shall be amended part versus the part that, what used to be versus what shall be amended to. Some of these certification pages lay out the changes being made in the shall be amended to read section very well, using italics for additions, using crossouts for language where it's leading. Some of them don't have that language, like Chapter 12, the emergency management doesn't indicate in the same stretchable fashion what changes are being made. I think probably track changes was just off when maybe some of these were being printed off. I just want to bring that up. It's 12, there's probably more, but 12, 24 is like that. 30, the sign chapter. 42, the utilities, just before these are signed and certified as representing the changes to the ordinance. I mean, if you look at like 46, you look at that, it's cross out what's being deleted. It's nice. It's easy to see. Same with 48, but the ones I mentioned, and there might be another one or two, if we can get those updated to be consistent and reflect what's being taken away and what's being added in the same fashion, I think that makes it very clear to anyone looking at it what the changes actually are versus having to compare this language to this language on the sheet.
Got it.
So like I said, it might just be a track changes thing. John has his pen up, so I will defer. He might have an answer to that.
Thank you. Ms. Karen?
Yeah, so there's two versions of the changes in the packet. The first set is the typical red strike line, blue for new language section. The second section is basically just a black and white where I went through, because sometimes it can be hard, especially if I got a paragraph where I got some strikeout, some knew what it would, the final read would look like, because that's basically what we would be publishing. So those ones in the second section is, I think that's what you're referring to. Because I'm looking at Chapter 12, I've got the red-blue edited portions in the front pages of it, so.
I do as well, but we will go through each one of them.
Confirm all that, yeah.
And make sure.
Confirm that, because the set I went through, I don't know, maybe my packet's a little, maybe I jumbled it while I was reading it, but just made sure.
We will, absolutely.
That they, you know, contains, because some of the ones I have in the second section do have the changes.
I've gone absolutely cross-eyed going through this thing, so.
I know you have. Some of them do have the changes, some of them do in that second section. So just made sure when these get certified, they're done consistently. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, John, thanks for, for doing this. I think we're all cross-eyed after trying to read through this over a holiday weekend, by the way. But my question.
Try reading it for 10 months.
I know, I know. I know. Well, and some of the stuff, we, we've sat in committee meetings and kind of played around with it a bit too, so this hopefully helps it. My question is a little more overarching, and that is, there's a line on many of these pages that say, any ordinance or parts of any ordinance in conflict with any provision of this ordinance are hereby repealed. And I guess, Mr. Erie, can you tell me how that, how that actually comes about? And if, if and when it's, it's, you know, implicated as, as something that, I mean, how do we find out? If something is in conflict?
Answer number one, it actually comes about as soon as this is passed, presuming it.
gets passed, to anything in conflict with it. And that is, that is standard ordinance language, that if we make a change to an ordinance in some fashion, and that creates a conflict with some other portion of an ordinance that, for whatever reason, was not caught, but gets identified somewhere down the road, that is simply a statement to anybody that looks at it, like a judge or another attorney, saying that what we have changed it to tonight overrides the conflict that may exist that wasn't picked up.
Okay, so this is pretty much boilerplate.
Yes.
For this stuff. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rubello. So I guess the overlying message of this whole thing is the City of St. Clair Shores wants to keep an eye on property management, good properties, short grass, things that the, the code enforcement officer can control. None of the police department is not involved with, with any of us as far as violations go. This is strictly Norma's ballgame right here.
Well, the motor vehicle code would be a police department function, so this is largely code enforcement?
Yeah, I would say a large, the large percentage of it is going to be code enforcement, correct?
The largest percentage of it will be code enforcement. And I will say that the City of St. Clair Shores has always wanted to make sure that properties are maintained.
Yes.
I think what this, the changes in these ordinances do is it removes some of the bureaucratic hamstrings that the code enforcement functions have faced solely because of the backlog in the courts. It's not, it's not at fault with anyone, but it is, you know, as Councilman Karen mentioned, the timeline between requesting a complaint and warrant and actually being in the court process can sometimes, and I think all of you have felt this frustration, be a long period of time.
Yes.
We believe that moving to civil infractions will actually create an opportunity to expedite compliance.
Okay. I mean, obviously, it's, this isn't a, this isn't a perfect thing, and in a perfect world, there's going to be, there's going to be some discrepancies. And people that have discrepancies are going to be able to voice their opinion.
People who have reasons that they won't be able to comply with whatever they're not in compliance with always have the opportunity to talk to the code enforcement supervisor.
They'll have their say.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if they disagree, if a ticket is issued and they disagree, they have the opportunity to go to the court and dispute it, as was mentioned.
So let's, can I take an example?
Yeah.
Let's take an example. I guess the most basic example is guy's property, the grass is too high, and he's not doing anything about it, or his bushes are, whatever it happens to be. What happens to him? Normally, he'll be, he'll be, a notice of violation, 10 days.
So let me just clarify, in the grass situation.
Yeah, let's see how, yeah, I want to.
In the grass situation, we can write a violation now, and the process has been that we will cut the grass if you don't cut the grass.
Okay.
So let's take that example one step further. The grass is too long in a rear yard. We can say, we're going to cut the grass. The ordinance says right now, we can cut the grass. We'll go in, cut the front grass. The person says, get off my property.
Yep.
We have to leave. And in this case, the code enforcement officer could write a ticket that would come with a fine automatically, right? And then that, the individual would have to go to court and either pay the fine, or they would have to dispute it. Now, we could write that ticket every day for the duration that the grass is too long.
Okay.
Under this version of the ordinances. Let's take another example. You have junk in your backyard.
Yeah, that's what I want, the basic stuff here.
Right. You don't, we, we give you a notice of violation, you have seven days to clean it up. You don't clean it up. We give you a final notice of violation, you have seven more days. Now, that's 14 days that we're telling you, your property is not in compliance with our ordinances, you need to clean it. They don't clean it. We go back, we write a ticket. Now, there's a $50 fine associated with it. In the past, it would have been, we would request a complaint and warrant, the city attorney's office would sign off on that, and then we would have to wait for the district court to actually schedule it. So this just makes it much more efficient for us, for them, for the city attorney.
So everyone's got fair warning, a fair chance to fix things.
Totally.
People right now.
In a quicker, to us, in a quicker, more efficient way to get this taken care of.
More quickly, yes.
Because, you know, talking to the code enforcement officer, I mean, she was obviously all on board for this, and I.
She was involved in the process, absolutely.
And I know everybody here, I think, is on board for a quicker process and, yeah, I just, I guess people have to realize that, you know, St. Clair Shores wants to remain in a more nice, pristine, cleaner place with nicer properties and so forth. So I guess, you know, overall, this is sort of what we're trying to say with this, these particular changes.
I, sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The last thing I wanted to say is, how do businesses or how do residents, I know they can get on our ordinance pages and stuff, but maybe we can provide, at least for the time being, an easier link for them to find this and go through it and read it and understand how are they going to be put on notice as far as the changes go? So.
So I can work with the communications department to make sure that the link is accessible, number one, so people can find it. We can create a social media campaign if that, you know, if council would like us to have a communications plan that was talked about previously on how we're going to get these out. I think we can also, you know, make sure that people know, maybe through the newsletter, I'm not sure if there's room, that we are moving to a civil infractions process.
Yes, I think that's important. The communication part of this, I think it's very important to let people know that we're making changes for the better.
I, I think that it's also important for people to know that city council has created a catalog of ordinances that really do outline the way that the expectation of the community's aesthetic. The expectations are very clear in the ordinances. What has been less well-defined is how do we actually get to compliance?
Ms. Ryan?
And to kind of piggyback off of what Denise says, a lot of these ordinances haven't changed. It's the enforcement of how they are changing.
Right.
So anybody who is going to see a change is purely going to be notified right away with the notice of violation of what they did wrong. It's going to cite what the ordinance is, what their violation is, and the amount of time they have to fix it. If they don't fix it, they're going to be noticed again. So at any time, they're going to be able to look up the ordinance, it's going to have what section, what's the role, what they're violating, and how to comply with that violation. So it'll be, and anybody who, I mean, hopefully, a lot of our residents don't have to ever deal with this ever, because they're going to have compliant residencies and businesses, is only those that are not following our current ordinances.
See, I'm big on at least putting something like what you just described on the notice of violation.
Yes, it will.
So they get it. I think it's important to communication to them.
One of the big things that, in order for, to make this, we are going to be having in front of council when it was in our budget, is an upgrade of our software system to be able to get that information out there, as well as making sure all of our code enforcement officers do have a tablet where they're taking pictures, because we have to document all of this throughout the process to make it easy, if they do go to court, that we have the documentation of when we were out there, what was left, what was noticed, that we left something on their front porch, we take a picture, we've also sent a mailing out, notified the owner of the property, and we also have all the evidence. So we have been working with the court and working with everybody, so we have that same solid procedure going through.
Everyone's on board going forward, so that sounds good. And we've all had our chance to add or take stuff out of here as we went, so we've had plenty of time to look at this. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Erie? Just put slightly differently than the way Dustin shared it, just so there's no misunderstanding to the viewing audience, this ordinance neither increases nor decreases a property owner's obligations with respect to their property. In other words, the question of, well, gee, what do I have to do now that I didn't have to do before? That's a question, the answer to that question is nothing.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So do we have like a transition plan for, there's people that we're in court with right now, and people that we're going to go to court, what, what is sort of the transition plan that we're thinking about? Or do we just let that play out and then they start fresh? I don't, you know.
I would ask for Mr. Erie to chime in as well, but I believe that anybody who's currently in court will remain in court unless their violation continues to exist after this, these ordinances, should they be adopted, are effective. So remember, we still have to publish the ordinances before they're effective. So if they're in court, then they stay there. But if the day after these are effective and the violation still exists, then we would be able to start the process with a civil infraction. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Erie?
To quote our city manager, 100%.
So we could actually be double-dipping on some of these, but I get it. I know why we're doing this, we're trying to, to clear that up. So I would make a motion to approve the amendments to ordinances in the following chapters, Article 1, Chapter 2, Chapters 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 20, 22, 24, 26, 28, 30, 32, 34, 36, 38, 40, 42, 44, 46, and 48.
Support that with a slight correction. We had numbers transposed.
Okay.
Article 2, Chapter 1.
Article 2, Chapter 1. John, you made a mistake. What are you doing?
We kept copying the same thing.
Supported by Mr. Karen. And a question by Ms. Rusi.
Oh, thank you. So I know we are turning where currently some misdemeanors into civil infractions, bring up more in line, I think, with the philosophy behind the difference between a crime and a civil infraction. Are we turning any civil infractions into misdemeanors in this?
No, I don't believe we are.
Okay, so, you know, so to, I guess, just piggyback off of, we're not adding a new substantive obligations on people in terms of what they have to do. These are the same laws, we're just changing some of the procedure, and I don't think anyone's going to complain, oh, my God, you're not dragging me to court on a misdemeanor charge potentially, I'm getting a civil infraction instead. No one's going to say, I should be held to a misdemeanor instead of a civil infraction. I wouldn't think so. In terms of letting people know, we're not adding substantive changes, we're actually making things now a little bit easier for administration, but a little bit of a lesser consequence for some residents for things that probably should be.
And I believe that, you know, what this does do in more cases will be assess a fine.
Yep.
So there is a change. Residents will feel a change because we're assessing a fine. But again, the goal is to expedite compliance. So I think the one thing that I would say, though, is if we look on the very first page, 21 of 803, it's actually Chapter 1, Article 2. So just want to make sure that the motion is clear.
Yep, that's what he said, yep. Mr. Vitale?
I'm going to start with this question, because you just mentioned the idea of fines.
Yes.
And it does say in here that any of the following provisions of this code shall constitute municipal civil infraction punishable by fines established by city council resolution. How do we know what our fines are?
So in the municipal civil infractions ordinance, it's actually already set. In the ordinance, it says.
Where is that contained in here?
Let me find you the section.
And I guess the question is, are the fines the same for all types of violations?
Yes. That is what is proposed, is the first fine would be $50, the second is $250, and the third is 500. And that is actually in, I don't see it in here, but it is in ordinance now.
Because we're not changing it, so it's not included, yeah.
It's not in this package.
Exactly. So I had no idea what these fines were going to be. So if we have, you know, some of this deals with someone not pulling a permit or something like that.
Yes.
Now, some things that we require permits for seem to be, let's say, a bit more of a gray area. The question might be, is a new patio require a permit if there's other construction that occurs at the same time? There might be confusion on that. So we have a resident who pours a new patio and thinks it's included under the rest of their building permits, and we tell them, no, you have to pull another permit for this. At what point do we start assessing a fine?
I think that's more of an education than a civil infraction, to be honest, because...
But could we give a resident a $50 ticket for not pulling a permit?
Well, first, they would get 14 days to pull a permit.
Okay.
So they would have ample time to pull a permit if they were given that notice of violation. Yes.
Second question is, on the fourth page of this deals with Chapter 4, alcohol, and this looks, if I'm correct, it's largely a lot of minor in possession language in here, MIPs?
Let me get to Chapter 4, I apologize.
It's like four pages in.
Is furnishing to minors, yes, that's included.
Okay, so that's not the same, then, as minor in possession? The reason I ask is because in doing some research on this, I just happened to come across a January 1, 2018 change to state law that took this from, some had misdemeanor, some had civil infraction, and the state clarified that they'll all be civil infractions, because there was so much disparity between punishment in some cities versus other cities. So we have down in here that the provisions of this chapter shall constitute a misdemeanor punishable according to section. So are these minor in possession, or you're saying this is all dealing with furnishing? Because.
It's minor in possession.
It's minor in possession and it's furnishing.
So it's both?
It looks like it is both.
So I don't think we can make that a misdemeanor?
We have language, we have language that is in what's being passed tonight that indicates that if state law requires something to be a misdemeanor, it defaults to the state law misdemeanor.
So just, I want to read this real quick. The law on minor in possession of alcohol, also known as MIP, was recently changed, goes into effect January 1, 2018. Prior to the change, all MIPs were considered misdemeanors, depending on where the case was heard, sentences varied, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, right off the bat, this one's no good.
As I indicate, we default to state law if our ordinance.
Should we might as well scrap this one now, though, so that we don't bother to put something in that's not enforceable? Probably Chapter 4 should just, we shouldn't have any change, or it should be changed to civil infraction.
Well, I would, I would hesitate to do that right now. I would say that we will take a look at that and change it if indeed that is required.
Anything else?
How does that fit into a motion? Is that something that's going to come back to us?
I think it's, with Mr. Erie, what he said is that we would, we'd pass here and then move on, and then look, reevaluate it and correct it if need be.
So that'll be an action item?
In the future.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's something that's brought up as, you know, follow-ups. Okay.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, just to clarify, in Chapter 4, in terms of what was changing in here, is that we already had misdemeanors, but it was appearing in a couple of different articles within Chapter 4. So it's striking the individual misdemeanors in the article and just having one overarching one, but there's multiple sections in there. So in terms of the action item for Mr. Erie is to figure out if any of the other ones that we don't have listed here, because they weren't changing, are in alignment with what you just read in terms of the state law.
I'll forward this article along.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Rubello?
Denise, that's not like a Norma thing, though. Most of this.
That would be the PD.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's, that's for them.
Yeah.
And as far as like, Chris brought up the fines, so the fines are going to be enough where, okay, I'm just going to pay the fine and forget about the, you know, forget about what I'm doing. the, you know, forget about what I'm doing and have it just keep repeating itself, because a lot of these folks are repeating themselves. So how do we, how do we fight back against the repeaters that are just wanna pay the fine? Do we have maybe a fine that goes up each time, or what's?
The fine does escalate with the offense. So the first fine, the first-
Okay.
-is $50, the second one is $250, the third one is $500.
I just wanted to make sure-
Yeah, so it does escalate if we have repeat offenders.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And I actually want to just expand on that just slightly in that we have a situation where a gentleman has a car, you know?
Don't I know?
You do. So let's say that that gentleman has one car, he gets a ticket, he removes that one car, but brings back another one. That is, according to our conversations with our city attorney, a second offense. He brought back another car, he knows it needs to be licensed, so it's not like every time we start over with every violation.
Capisce.
Mr. Vitale?
I was actually just talking to somebody about this the other day. You referenced car and licensing.
Yes.
Now, our code enforcement officers don't look at license plates, do they?
They look to see-
Haven't we always been told that was a police department function?
So what they can look to see is that if it is a current year tab. So they can look and see that it's a 2024 tab. They don't look at the actual license plate to say, oh, that belongs to you, because they don't have the capability of knowing that.
Are we ticketing people with vehicles that appear operable because they don't have current tags?
We are ticketing people if they don't have a current license, yeah, we would be.
When did that change come about? I understand that that is the-
It's in the ordinance.
I understand that that is the ordinance, but there was a time where we basically felt code enforcement was wasting time. And the wasting time came in just exactly what we're talking about. A vehicle that appears operable, has inflated tires, doesn't have any missing panels, broken windows, or anything like that, and we've got somebody crawling up there to go take a look and look at the tag. We're not supposed to be the state's license plate collection agency.
If that's the direction of council, we will no longer look at that. It is in the ordinance, however.
Well, I mean, I can think of a dozen things that call out a lot more attention-
Sure.
-than an otherwise operable vehicle, and what we're told is that code enforcement doesn't even have enough time to go out and look for things. Everything we do is complaint-driven. So if we have a situation where someone has a vehicle in their driveway that would appear operable to a normal person, why are we wasting time on that?
So if we get a complaint that a person has a vehicle in their driveway that hasn't moved in a month, it would be something that we'd go at-
We don't have anything in our language that says how often you have to drive your car.
You're absolutely right. But we get complaints for people who have vehicles that don't move frequently, so-
Okay. But again, we don't have language that says how often you have to move a vehicle.
You're correct.
We would say this vehicle doesn't have a front end on it.
Sure.
It's unsightly, it's debris, it's junk. That would be something to take action on. Somebody who has an otherwise operable vehicle, why would we spend time on that? I mean, is there agreement here?
If that's the direction of council-
Certainly not what I want to see code enforcement or the police department using time on.
Okay.
So do we have a case like that that's going on right now? Dave sounded like he knew of something.
I don't think that those vehicles are operable.
They're gonna try to keep it.
Their tires are all flat at this point. They're not operable, right.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen to approve the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7, is request to approve the lease agreement with the post office. Mr. Lenn, as you know, we had this discussion last meeting to get the lease agreement, which was the post office, which was tabled back in July, I think, of 2023, and then I think eventually signed in early 2024. And so it was asked to provide it to the body. It should have come back to the body, it did, and you've signed it here. And then, so, take it from here.
Yeah, as the mayor stated, in your packet is the signed lease agreement. That was signed by myself in January, this January 24, actually on the 24th. Everything that is in the agreement is what was negotiated by Erie's office with remarks to what council had looked for at that time, specifically going from a five-year term down to a three-year term. That was negotiated, as well as, I know there was a question in here as well, that was in the email about paying a commission to the post office on their real estate agent. That was not paid. We were able to establish that contract without having to pay their agent as well. Everything else is in your packet.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. First off, in terms of the lease that was executed in January versus the one we reviewed in July of '23, the only difference is the amount going of term, going from five-year and the one we had looked at in July to, this is three-year, but the lease amount and everything else is the same. Correct?
Correct.
Looking at the lease, I guess I have a question on the signature page. If you look at the letter that was sent to us in July '23 that we had our packet at the time, it said that the lease agreement, signatures must be witnessed by two parties or notarized. What I'm seeing here is it witnessed by, it's not notarized, it was witnessed by one party, I believe, is that Natalie Turner's?
That is.
But not two people. So did the post office accept this, or was this, because it doesn't comply with the letter that they had the property, the transaction manager, I'm sorry, the transaction manager had sent in July indicating how the lease was to be executed?
I can answer that. Post office did accept that. I spoke with the transaction manager myself on that.
And then there is underneath the landlord's information, signature subsection A, where the landlord is a governmental entity or other amiable entity, which is us, the lease must be accompanied by documentary evidence affirming the authority of the signatory to execute the lease to bind the government entity or amiable entity for which he or they purports to act. If we had had this brought back to us and took a council vote, the documentary evidence would have been easy, that would have been the minutes or any resolution we had passed at the meeting, what was submitted when this was signed back in January, given that this never came before council, for us to give the authorization to the same manager to sign it. It's in subsection A, right under the witness signatures.
Mr. Erie?
I'm looking at that. We essentially gave them the same lease that they had accepted. There were some term changes to it, but they had accepted our signature from the city manager.
Right, but that was, I mean, but that section, I believe, was, given that this form was last changed in April 2009 from the margin of their document, I would imagine that clause would have been in the one we had in July. So that would have been a requirement in July, and like I said, they, we would have just probably submitted what the minutes or a resolution, but what was submitted in January when this was submitted?
That typically would be for the protection of the landlord, and if they were to have a problem with the fact that the signature was not accompanied by a documentary evidence affirming the authority of the city manager, they certainly could raise that if that was a problem to them, and we would secure that for them. But as far as I'm aware, they did not raise that issue, and I don't, I think that's a concern that they may have. I don't think it's particularly a concern that we would have. In other words-
I have the concern, because it was signed without any authorization from us.
What I'm indicating is that I don't think that if the post office in some situation said, well, we're not obligated to comply with this lease because we don't have documentary evidence affirming the authority of the signatory, I don't think that would fly if that was their position, and we certainly could get them such evidence. You are 100% correct. The fine print does say that, and it does create, it does tell us that the post office would like to have that and should have that. They don't, and they've never asked for it.
No, it's not so much fine prints and the same font size as everything else on page three, so, but anyway. I guess this, I am, like I had stated at the August 19 meeting, really kind of does bother me how it was handled. I had asked about this in July 15, and literally my thought process was, I'd been walking around nine, you know, downtown St. Clair Shores. I thought, oh, I remember, we had talked about this. You know, this was in July, I don't remember the exact day, but it was July 2023, or summer's, before Linda got on council, it was that long ago. I thought, all I remember of that were coming back to us, whatever happened with that. And quite honestly, my suspicion was that it just kind of fell by the wayside, the post office didn't follow up when you're dealing with, you know, an entity like the federal government that probably has, what, thousands of these leases across the United States? That maybe this wasn't on the top priority list for them, and this was something that, oh yeah, we should follow up with them on that. And I was surprised when I learned from bringing the updates from the council meeting, it was on, in the consent agenda, one line, this was executed in January. And it's like, how was that executed in January? This never came back to us, and we learned how this was executed in January. And I didn't find out about that until we got the packet for the August 19 meeting, when I had asked in July 15 that this would have been researched by administration, which when I asked on July 15, neither the city manager nor the city attorney remembered it happening in January. I would have liked to, you know, have an email or a phone call or something, hey, we researched that question you asked, there's the answer, not just a passive voice sentence buried in an update in the consent agenda about it. Then when I read the memo, it says, when reading the agenda, I am the same manager placed emphasis on this item, which that's not true, that's not accurate at all. I defy anyone who actually watched the meeting to agree with that. The emphasis was placed because I followed up with questions about it to the passive voice statement that the lease was executed in January 2024. And I said, well, how was this executed? Then that's when emphasis was placed pursuant to my asking questions about it. If I had been daydreaming during that item or not had looked at the minutes from the July meeting to see, from the July 2023 meeting to see what happened, all this was tabled, that type of thing, it just wouldn't, I don't think it would have been brought to our attention that that's how it was handled, that it was executed mistakenly, inadvertently, wrongfully, whatever adjective, adverb you want to pick, until I, so it wasn't placed emphasis, it was placed emphasis because I started asking questions about it. So I guess I'm wondering, I would have always thought or assumed that we have, in terms of our administration, a process for things that we table up here, because we do table things quite often, because we don't have enough information, or because we want something else brought back to us, changes made, further negotiations. We have the, you know, something that was removed from the agenda, the Jefferson lot, which we tabled. You know, we table things all the time up here.
The intel, the intel one coming up.
Yeah, the intel one coming up. I always had assumed the city manager's office would have kept track of that to make sure things get followed up on and come back to us. I guess they weren't, because in January, this contract was emailed by the city attorney, and it didn't state, like it was stated at the meeting, oh, the city attorney sent his email, please sign this. No, it actually does, the email that was sent from the city attorney on January 3 says, once the matter has been approved by council. So the very email that was attaching the agreement that was then executed in January by the city manager, the email from the city, and I noticed I didn't say, when that was stated at the last meeting, I didn't start, like, questioning Bob, because I had worked, I've worked with Bob for 15, 16 years at this point, and it's like, that doesn't sound like Bob. Bob Wednesday just signed this. And sure enough, I get the email, and it doesn't say that, doesn't say that at all. It actually evokes council approval, once the matter has been approved by council. And that part was ignored. So that just kind of bugs me how this was handled. And I guess going forward, I would want from the city manager's office now a process for how we keep track of tabled items or postponed items, things we move, you know, when we take action up here, if we don't take complete action approving something. Even if we take action, I say approving something which sometimes is contingent upon things happening, changes being made, we should get follow-up on that, and we definitely should get follow-up on things we table or postpone, so it's not a year later where I'm thinking, oh, whatever happened to that? And I find out then via asking affirmatively, doing my own research, staying around and then waiting for the update a month later in the consent agenda portion of the meeting, what happened to that, and then having to ask follow-up questions about that. So I understand mistakes happen, accidents happen, but it's just, it's frustrating. It's frustrating, too. The city manager was able to review the process that yielded the erroneous signature, the erroneous signature. It's just funny wording to me. It's like I'm running down the hallway of State Hall, and I fall, and I, whoops, I had suddenly signed this. Mistakes happen, I get that, but it's how the mistakes are handled and addressed after, especially when questioned directly about them, that really, I think, are important. And this one, I'm not happy with how this was handled, and not happy with the position we're in, where we now have to bless this contract, that's post facto. It's been in effect for, you know, seven months, eight months at this point. It's already signed, we're going to be tied to it for, you know, another couple of years, and it's at the point where we can't change it at this point, because it already was signed without authorization, and it just really kind of, a lot of these things, process-wise, bug me with how this was handled.
I think we can work, and I will work with Mr. Lenn on giving, when things are tabled or postponed.
Isn't that sad that has to be done? That's sad that it wasn't being done.
Most of them come, as you say, they come right after almost the next meeting. Unfortunately, this one took a lot longer.
And we get the consent agenda, too, and now it does have the updates and follow-ups as part of the consent agenda, which I do appreciate getting that in paper form, where we affirmatively receive and file it. Before, we were just getting emails. So even the process in here where we received this as part of the agenda, that was because we asked for that, too, a few months ago. That's a relatively new process. So here's another process we need to put in place to make sure the right things happen.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. And in support of everything Councilwoman Rusi just went through, just kind of add-on a few things. In terms of the, you know, the explanation we're given at the last meeting, and after getting the actual email that was referenced, find that, no, it did state council needs to approve this. But also, that email was sent on January 3, the lease was signed on January 24, there was a council meeting on January 8, there was a council meeting on January 22, so there are two opportunities that that could have been added to the agenda, and it wasn't. So I think that's also of, how does that get missed? In terms of, it clearly said council needs to approve it, and it just didn't make an agenda, and then all of a sudden just gets signed two days after a meeting. Don't understand that yet, and I don't think I'm going to get to understand that. Then getting into when the question was raised in July of what happened to the lease, and we find out in middle of August that it was signed, and the updates, as Councilwoman Rusi had mentioned. I guess my expectation would have been of, when the question came up, and then it was discovered that it was signed, and I realized, ooh, that was a tabled item from council, they probably should have approved that, maybe I ought to get communication out right away and just say, hey, here's what happened. I'm sorry, made a mistake. But instead, it was one line and an update, and council had to question what was going on. So I think as an example going forward, we need, mistakes happen, we get it. This is an incredibly complex city. We've got things that break, fall apart, things happen all the time, get that. But we need those things brought forward when they happen, and be open and honest of why it happened, and let's move on in that. So I think that's just my message on this one going forward.
Mr. Rabello?
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one. Obviously, everyone knows what went wrong, and the key words I hear from Councilwoman Rusi and Councilman Karen is going forward. So I think that this going forward won't happen again. Everyone can see why that would be an issue when it does happen, and we gotta- And we gotta at least lay down a plan. I've always been, other agenda items, other days. I like plans. I like timelines. I like, what are we doing and why we're doing it? And how do we reach our goal? And I guess the first thing I'd like to say is really this affects the parking lot back behind the post office the most. Really is what we're doing here because I think all of us know how important that darned post office is to the city of St. Clair Shores. It's good to have in a downtown area like we have. It's, I guess, one of the, you know, central buildings that we have down there. It does generate a lot of foot traffic. So make no mistake, the post office is very important, at least to me and I think to the city of St. Clair Shores. So going forward, the process to me is obviously important to like has been mentioned up here. It's a three-year lease. I don't think there's too much we can do about it. And going forward, let's not let this, you know, happen again. I'm sure something will happen. And we can overcome this, but definitely the process broke down. But that post office is important to the city and I guess, I don't want to get into maybe, you know, longer leases at this point, but that's a three-year lease. Bob, I always, I pop this question up once in a while to you. Is the document Candace has brought up some good points, is that document legal?
It is.
Okay. And I would say just remembered what, what happened here with this lease. And going forward, I, I recommend, I'll move to approve the proposed lease for Cavalier Jive with the U.S. Post Office for one three-year period beginning January 1st, 2024, ending December 31, 2026.
I support that with a comment.
Moved by Mr. Rebel, supported by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, I, I mean, I fully accept the apology by the city manager for noted the mistake and that we know that stuff happens. And, you know, I support his hard work. And I know he has a lot of stuff that comes through that office and, you know, these are the kinds of things that, that make us all better. So I appreciate everything you're doing in there.
Moved by Mr. Rebel, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the post office three-year for three-year period starting January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to, what were you gonna say, Bob?
No, when you're finished with this.
Six to one, it, it passes and then, Justin, thank you. We'll work too. Table just so something goes because as it's been said, stuff does sometimes slip through the crack when you have a big city like ours. Did you?
I did, with, with the mayor's permission, if I can take 15 seconds and go back to the last agenda item. That was MIP on there, but the key words are MIP in a motor vehicle. And that makes it a misdemeanor. And also the other one, furnishing fraudulent ID to a minor is a misdemeanor as well. And that's why they were exceptions in this. So
Okay.
MIP is a civil infraction and it remains a civil infraction in our ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Item eight bids, contracts, purchase orders. Eight A, request to approve proposal for the professional moving services for the relocation of the police department, fire department, administrative officers. Mr. Reyes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Reyes, Hennessy Engineers. Well, it's coming up fast to move the police and fire department out of their buildings. And I'll just quickly tell you where the project is. The bid packets were emailed out to the contractor today for bidding. So they're 100% complete and we're going to be meeting later this week and one day next week with entire committee to go through each page, make sure nothing's missed or concerns by the contractor that need to be addressed during the bid period. They are still scheduled to come before council on October 7th for the gross maximum price for both buildings. So if all that happens on October 7th, we'll be ready to pinpoint the exact date when we want to start moving police and fire out of their building to the new locations. The construction at St. Lucy's is nearly complete. They're finishing some painting there. The D mark has been dropped by AT&amp;T for the computer backbone. So that's set to go. They gotta, there's some things that can't happen until we actually move out of the building, bulletproof glass that's being relocated. And then that'll be done and construction starting this week at Cedar. So all the pieces are moving to keep the project on schedule. So we put this out to bid. Three bidders showed up to the mandatory walkthrough. We went through the various existing facilities that they're going, leaving and going to with the police staff and fire staff identifying what they could that needs to be moved. Obviously some things are going to be left behind, a lot of stuff to be packed. And then moving parts to different facilities, gym equipment, the beds going to different facilities. So we received the three bids with the little bidder being Palmer Moving Services. And we did ask for prices for moving out and moving back though. And you'll see in the proposal, that's why we had language about negotiating the actual fee. Because not everything's necessarily coming back. Some things are going to be packed. Some things may be purged through the move. It's hard to pinpoint everything, say we're moving every single thing. I know Sergeant Campbell has scanned and purged a lot of stuff over there. And there's still more to be purged before the move happens. And I'm working with the fire department to help them kind of purge even more stuff on their side for the move. So the move out number for Palmer for both facilities is $66,632. And the move back would be $43,775 as they see the picture today. So that'd be a total of $110,407 to move both facilities out of the facility to the various sites and then collect whatever's coming back and put it into the new building. Part of the unknown, because we're still kind of in a flux, I guess, and maybe it's not quite the right word, is we're working on getting pricing for furniture. Can we replace everything we hope to replace? Or we may have to salvage some stuff. And so we're trying to get that number solidified. So we know exactly what needs to come back and wasn't, what's not going to be coming back and may just be sold off. So with that, I guess I can take any questions you may have. Part of the move, and I'd say the city, and I haven't talked to the chiefs about this. We should be thinking about getting out somewhere the week following the award for the gross maximum price. As we, there's stuff that's going to be salvaged out of the building. I think that some of the lockers in the PD, which aren't really that old, are going to be taken by parks. We have utility disconnects. We have abatement to do before the demolition. And the sooner we can get them out, the sooner we can start getting salvage work, abatement done. So when November comes and everybody's ready to go, everything is out of the building. And then schedule that utility disconnect for both those buildings.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Going through my packet, I received a thumb drive with the TAMP, the Transportation Asset Management Plan that's under the consent agenda. Did I miss the thumb drive with the request for bids and the actual seminals for this item?
I can't answer that. I'd have to, the chief put the, police chief put that together.
Because we don't have that in paper form and it's not references enclosed. We have the mover bid tab that's typed. So this is even the bid tab at opening, which tends to be handwritten as the envelopes are open. We have the mover sign in sheet to see who I guess showed up to the pre-conference tour, which I guess was part of the request for bids and proposals, which I wouldn't know because we didn't have that. We have a disclosure which says that they have no contract failures or any litigation, which I guess again was part of their RFP or RFB, but I didn't see that. And for some reason we have an addendum number one that has a couple of questions from, I guess, potential bidders and the answers and some typos being corrected or whatever, which is fine. But I don't have the actual request for bid or the request for proposals, nor do I actually have the seminals from the bidders.
I, I know it's all on the city website because I printed a copy for myself to make sure everything was there. I didn't prepare the thumb drives for that.
I don't think we got, did we get a thumb drive besides the TAMP?
It may, it must have been the TAMP. So we'll have to make sure why it didn't get out.
Yeah, because.
It was.
Did anyone, I mean, I didn't just miss it. It wasn't just left in my envelope. Did anyone get it up here? And how can I, how can I award anything? I don't even know what was asked of these people. I don't know what they submitted. And I don't have the handwritten bid tab that they generate when they open the envelopes. I have the typed one, but I don't have the one that's actually generated upon bid opening, which I assume is separate. But we're, you know, literally, this is the items we, it's very, very thin.
It's not the same one I printed off from the city website.
It's not the same one. And no one caught that reviewing the packet before it landed on our porches on Friday or whenever. Yeah, Friday, Friday at noon.
When we review the packets, we review everything that's online. That's, and it gets printed. So for some reason it didn't get added to.
Yeah, you probably should review the paper copies we actually receive on our porch because that's what we have. And it's very difficult. We're talking about 111, you know, a $110,000 item. It's important. And we got this and we get a copy for some reason, the addendum and disclosure, but not the actual request or the actual seminals that were submitted. And also another issue, recommended motion, it says to enter into a contract. We even have a copy of the contract. So I can't approve entry into a contract. I can approve awarding a bid had I the information, but I can't approve awarding a contract because we don't award contracts unless we have the contracts or the bid we authorize you to execute the contract.
Right. And so part of that is the, generally we would work with the company to have, they don't have a contract. And so I talked to the gentleman about their contract and what they would want from their side. They basically just say, this is our number and they're good with a PO. And I'm like, yeah, well, we don't work that way. So that's something that would be worked with Bob to make sure all the language that's in the RFP is within a contract. So.
Which I don't even know what that is because I don't have the RFP. Well, I, it, it's just, it's frustrating because the motion is even incorrect because it's to approve, to enter into a contract, which we can approve the, but we're not, we're more approving the bid with the authorization given to administration to enter into a subsequent contract based upon that. But again, we, we received not much information. And like I said, I thought maybe I had mislocated a thumb drive, but it doesn't sound like anyone received it.
Chief, are you coming up?
Good evening. So the request for proposals for professional moving services for the relocation of the departments is, starts on page 198 of the packet.
On the online packet, but not our paper packet.
Yeah, I use the civic clerk to upload the documents.
Yeah, this is what we got in our paper packet that we use to prepare for the meeting that we receive in the afternoon on Friday for the meeting, which we actually got an extra day because it's Tuesday. But usually we have very few days to review the thousand pages we receive, which now I actually wish I'd received more pages to review.
Yeah, I've never, I've never done anything with paper. I've always done it into the civic clerk.
Yeah, this is, this is what we received. We received mover bid tab. And then again, this is the typed one. I don't know if there's a handwritten one that goes with that. Usually we receive both. We have the mover sign in sheet, I guess, to prove that the bidders attended. The disclosure letter, which is one sentence, and then addendum number one, which is the addendum to the RFP that we didn't receive, which that's not really helpful to me. It happens. But yeah, that's, that's frustrating.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm fully comfortable with this and in the, in the, I guess, the, the method to move this along because we're, we want to stay on time and on target. That I would move to approve whatever this is, contract or award the bid to Palmer Moving Services for the relocation of the police department and fire department of 110,407.
Is there support? There isn't support. No question. Is there support? There isn't? So the motion died in lack of support. Mr. Karen?
Yeah, on top of everything Councilwoman Rusi just brought up, something else I did not see in here. I know moving something from the police department into the house on Cedar that's going to be used temporarily for the fire department. You know, when that discussion was up at the, one of the prior meetings, we had asked if that could confirm with drug forfeiture that that was unlawful use. And we did get follow up email that they did agree to it, but it had to have materials from the police department moved into that house. I didn't see anything that kind of, is the police department manually moving stuff over to the house to comply with the federal requirement? Or should that have been in here someplace?
What's going to be there is basically all of our homicide files, which have to be kept for basically forever. So Sergeant Campbell, and they have to be temperature controlled. So we can't leave them, you know, in a shed or something like that. So they have to be in a controlled environment. So they're going to be moved to that Cedar house. And there are going to be a designated closet in one of the bedrooms that's going to be locked for police use only. And they'll be stored there. So they're just going to be traveling across the parking lot.
Personnel is going to do that, not?
Yep, the records bureau. Yep.
And then the other thing on here I did see, at least in what little we did get, the required background checks that are going to be needed that Sergeant Campbell's going to have to manage. So do we have the bandwidth to make sure that if this company is ever approved, that each person is, does go through the background check and we can have all that done before they start moving stuff?
Yeah, some of that information was submitted, but we eliminated it from the packet because it has personal information for those people that are going to be doing the work and really.
They've already submitted the background information. So it's not something Sergeant Campbell has to gather afterward.
Somewhat, not 100% of everybody that's on the team, but they're all aware of it. But we didn't want to include anything that would be personal information for those individuals that would be on the team.
Chris, timing wise, what, what, I mean, there's concern, right? There was a motion. There's also concern we don't have all the information, concern now about timing. How does this work? If, if this is not brought back to the 16th?
The, well, by approving it, then we can start getting some of the boxes and materials that this moving company is going to supply. And then the individuals that are going to be responsible either for their own office or some of those records that need to be pulled out of file cabinets. They can start getting some stuff that they don't go to every day and get it prepped and identified. We do have a moving plan for each individual. So they have an assigned number. So we know where the box is coming from and where it needs to go. We can have a count on each person. So you may have three boxes and Councilman Karen may have 10 boxes. We have a system so we can track all those things in place for the move. So really it just gives them a head start to start packing up a lot of things that aren't everyday things and start getting it prepped. And if we wait two weeks, they have two weeks left to do it. So I guess that's the, the simple answer, I guess, to the question. Just one other thing I did contact references for Palmer, two out of three I spoke to. They've used them more than once. They thought they had actually more people than needed, which in these kind of moves, you're better to have, I guess, a few extra than a few short because we need to move them promptly and get them back up to speed. So there's no concerns with the company in terms of their performance.
When you, when you spoke to those two companies, were they, in the nature of the police department or something to that effect?
One was Royal Oak and the other one, I think of Shelby Township.
The city got.
Royal Oak Police Department specifically. And the other one was their court in Shelby Township.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, just a couple of things I want to point out here. First of all, I'm happy to hear that all our homicide files fit into one bedroom closet. So that's good.
Not a very big closet either, so.
At least it didn't say a basement or something like that. Anyways, so one thing I just want to put out there for this Palmer Moving Services, you know, this is a company that has locations in Warren and in Ann Arbor. They, on their letterhead, have a number of endorsements below there. It's not, it's not a fly by night operation. And that their bid is, the next lowest bid was more than twice their bid. Now, any explanation? Now, any explanation for why, Chris, that would be so much lower?
Well, when you look at their breakdown, or when you get the information, I guess, to look at their breakdown, some of them have a supervisor and a project manager per building listed. Now, I don't know if that's the same project manager for all the buildings, or individual project managers, individual supervisors, but I don't know why you need a project manager and a supervisor for the Cedar House, or one at St. Lucy's and one at the PD. It seemed like some of them were over, in my opinion, and I'm not a mover, but when you look at their staffing, they have a lot more administration listed, as opposed to somebody responsible for shipping and one guy responsible for receiving. And so that's the only thing I can really tell you, and even, like, the one Premier, they have the same number for moving out and moving back with a 5% increase for inflation. When they're, when we discussed with them, not everything's coming back, you know, we anticipate this stuff coming back and not these things, but they basically took it as if A is going out and A is coming back, and we don't foresee that happening. It's going to be A's going out and A minus a certain amount of stuff is coming back. So, but I don't control how they do their bid process, but it seemed, that's why we asked them for all the detail on the moving, because we don't want somebody giving us a low number, and then we go, well, how many people are they going to have? How are they going to do this move? They just throw a number. So we want to see how many trucks they're going to have, how many people they're going to be there, how many boxes do they anticipate, and all that stuff is broken down in their proposals, in terms of moving trucks, a small truck with a lift gate, how many bags through the computers, how many anticipated boxes. All that stuff is broken down and that cost, so that if we go, wow, we moved a lot less, we're not going to pay this full premium. That's why there's the negotiation language left in their total quote, because we can't say, you know, move this room, we can count this room how much. It's not quite that easy when you have an operation that's still moving and hasn't been fully purged.
One other, and this doesn't necessarily pertain to a contract per se, I'm just going to put it out there, it's something that's kind of mentioned in the subcommittees. I know that firefighters and police officers tend to be sort of sentimental folks. Obviously, there's a lot of things that they've interacted with and used over the years that aren't going to be going to the new buildings. I think there's a good opportunity here to maybe do a charity auction for some of these items. Maybe could raise money for some of the firefighter charities, the burn camp, maybe some for the police, the Christmas toys and things like that. I'm thinking like fire department lockers. I know I've talked to a couple retired firemen who are interested in their, their old locker or something like that. We're not going to reuse those, they're wooden, you know, you know, there's probably similar artifacts at the Police Department, so, you know, maybe some of those things that we're not going to be using can maybe raise some money for a good cause or something. I know, Linda, you have a lot of contacts there, maybe I'm kind of floating that idea out for you and run with that. That's all I have.
I am concerned we don't have enough ti, I mean, time is limited, so that makes me worried with what we have here.
And so, I guess, I don't, you know, ultimately, that's what the council's comfortable with, but if we approve that, we're going to enter into a contract, and then we can draft a contract for a formal adoption of the language of that contract, maybe at the next meeting. At least we know we're going to go with Palmer, and, you know, unless you guys say, well, we want a contract for half that amount, you know, that's not realistic. If you're like, well, this is what we anticipate, this is a good number based on what we know we're moving out, then I'm not really concerned about the move-back number a year and another fiscal year. Maybe we end up rebidding it out, or maybe we negotiate a better price once we know what's coming back. And so that's why I wanted, I put the language together, be very flexible to the city's favor in terms of just not giving me a lump sum number and say, that's that.
Mr. Vitale, do we?
Is there a possibility to have a motion that would allow this to go forward conditional on receiving the receipt of these, the information, it sounds like we have, it just wasn't put in the packet?
Correct, it was online before.
Could we, could we conditionally approve this upon receipt of those items?
Well, yeah.
Because I think in terms of the numbers, there's not going to be any dispute on the numbers.
For sure, and, and I do, I would ask council, like you said, we, we put it all on civic clerk, we then print it all through civic clerk. If we do change anything on civic clerk, actually council does get a notification, so we do know that it was put on civic clerk at the very beginning. But if, if we realize when we get the packets and there is anything missing, I know it was a holiday weekend, but I do check my emails, I do have my phone. We easily could have got this information out rather than waiting and then having to delay something that is extremely important. We are able to get that information out. As Chris had mentioned, this is approximately $117,000 cheaper than the second lowest bid, and with trying to relocate two police and fire buildings, I do, I would ask council to approve, and as Chris had mentioned as well, we are able to work with the contractor and create the contract and bring the contract back for council's approval.
So would 48 hours be enough time to get that back?
It's online right now, so we can actually send it and email it out as soon as the meeting's over.
Well, I mean, I was going to put something in the motion, 24 hours?
Yep, 24 hours.
Okay, well, then I would make a motion to enter the contract with Palmer Moving Services for the relocation of Police and Fire Department for 110,0407, conditional upon council receiving printed copies of the required contract, bid tab, and specifications. Contract in 24 might be.
Right, the contract would be, we'd have to come back to the next council meeting.
Just what's online.
Yeah, we'll put it together for the next council meeting, I think.
Okay, so strike contract.
Yep. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Frederick.
Mr. Rabello?
Bobby, what we're doing here, is this, is this legal?
It's legal.
Okay. The point of the matter, it's how we got to this point, is this has come up again, and I don't mean to chastise anybody, because I'm not exactly sure the process of who's eyeballing these agenda items before they get to us. There was points made up here that are perfectly normal points to make, and I understand, I think we've done this type of thing before. I get it, based on, again, city manager, give us the contingencies of doing this, like, what are we?
So we're just authorizing, utilizing Palmer Moving Services, and a contract will be drafted and brought back in front of council at the next council meeting.
For the amount of 110,0407, and then they begin the process, boarding boxes, et cetera, to get the process moving.
Moving.
We've talked about this before, I know mistakes get made, things get overlooked, but if we can do a better job of eyeballing these things before they get to this point, can we do it?
For sure, and in each, I'm not going to sit here and make excuses, each mistake's a little bit different. There's, when there's something that's missed on the thing, everything is, just so the council understands, and the viewing public understands, every department is responsible for putting their stuff into civic clerk. Once it is inserted into civic clerk, I then review all the documents. Once the documents are all reviewed, then it goes to the clerks department, who then prints out all of the documents. Once the documents are printed out, then code enforcement delivers them to each one of your doors. We also have access to view everything online, just as well as all of the patrons. It's a lot easier to do the handwritten, the hand copies. Hence why we make the hand copies for everybody up here in council. So for whatever reason, whether the printer just stopped working at that time, or something wasn't clicked, or something happened, it just didn't get, it didn't get printed out, but from the very beginning, it was on the city's council packet, therefore printing. And unfortunately, like I said, it was missing, and we didn't know it was missing, because we reviewed it. Jason Allen, the chief police, put it all in, it was reviewed, put in, and then next thing we know, we're just now finding out with the viewing audience that there was a piece of information that wasn't put in the packet.
Okay, I didn't know if maybe, within the next week, we can maybe get it sort of what you said, it's how the process goes through.
Yep, that's how it works.
Because, you know, when you're dealing with bids and, you know, that's $110,000, you just want to make sure you look clean and everything's clean, you can understand that.
Yep, each one of your packets are, I mean, the last few have been way over, well over 1,000 pages, not including what's even in the thumb drives.
Okay.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. You know, looking at the yellow memo for the TAMP in the consent agenda, it says enclosed, and that is the one we did get, the jump drive for the thumb drive, whatever they call it now, enclosed. One policy for smill, two TAMP FAQs, three, the BAMP, which is the bridge asset, four, the PAMP, the pavement asset, five, the TAMP, the transportation asset management plan. But we don't have copies of the actual plan that was included, because they're on the thumb drive, but they are in the enclosure list on the yellow memo. When we look at the enclosure list on the yellow memo for the professional moving services, we see four items. We don't see any RFPs, RFBs, we don't see any bid from Palmer, bid from the other companies, Corrigan, Premier Relocations. We just see one, the bid tab, which again is the typed one, not the handwritten one that is generated upon opening, two, the mover sign-in sheet, three, the Palmer Disclosure, which is the one-sentence letter about litigation, and enclosure four, the addendum number one, the one-page, and question response, the one-page correction on a couple of the items that I guess were in the RFP, and the answers to the three questions submitted by the potential proposers. It doesn't say anything that there's ever any attention of enclosing the other documents. How was I supposed to know that there was more documents that were intended to be enclosed? It, it just, it's frustrating. I don't know if we do get something on the jump drive, it is listed in the enclosure on the memo. This isn't. So the printer ran out of ink, and my fingers, you know, whoever typed up the memos, fingers cramped up where they couldn't do five dot RFP, six dot bid from Premier, seven dot bid from Corrigan, eight dot bid from Palmer. It just, it's very odd that the enclosure table of contents, for lack of a better word, is also missing, the documents are missing, if there was any intention to include them in our paper packet. I know that they're in the online packet. I'm not making it a habit to read my paper packet and then go online and make sure that I saw everything that's in that packet, and that we get things that are in our paper packet, it's the blue paper that's attorney-client privilege or contains sensitive information that's not in the online packet. I'm not reviewing another set of council materials when I have my packet, and that's how I review, just to make sure we totally got everything that we should, especially what's not listed in the enclosures. It's just very frustrating. We do how many bids, contracts, and purchase orders a meeting, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and we always know what, you know, what we look for, what needs to be enclosed for us to make a decision. And now we're, we got to stick to the timeline, so you're vote for something you don't have the full set of information on, and you're putting us in that position. Again, we need to look at the paper packets too, not, you know, I think that's how they should be reviewed. Look at it like you're, like you're me. Sit there, before this goes out, this is how I look at my packet. Literally, I sit in bed, and I look at what I want to look at, I don't reorder, I take an item out, I have my pen, I nitpick if I feel like it. Sometimes I look at it again, sometimes I look at the nuts, you know, whatever, but I go through pretty quickly, and I make a pile, and here's my pile of stuff that's done, and here's my pile of stuff I still have to do. Sometimes it takes me a few days to get through. If I really want to call something, I fold the pages. That's why I like getting the paper packet versus, I know, sometimes they, they said, how about an online packet? You could sit here with a computer and, no, that's not how I operate. That's, that just doesn't make any sense. But I would recommend looking at the same thing we have in front of us when we prepare. No one, none, I don't think any of us, unless we're like out of town when the packet gets on our doorstep, is looking at the online packet necessarily. We look at the paper packet, that's what we bring to the meeting, and that's what we have in front of us during these robust discussions of all these items. So I would probably, if I wanted to, again, do a process improvement for how administration goes through this to make sure what should be enclosed, read it like, sit there, nitpick it, read it like you're an awful person with a red pen, and you like finding these things, because you do all the time. Read it like that, and say like, okay, oh, man, this number is not congruent with this number, oh, there's a typo here, oh, this, oh, this, oh, this. I would, you know, I would actually say, Matt, this is your job on Wednesday morning, I want you to spend all Wednesday morning with this paper packet and a red pen, being the biggest whatever you can be going through this and trying to get ahead of all the issues council may bring up, before council has to bring them up, and before these packets line, you know, land on their porch. That's how I would recommend, maybe administration goes to release packets, because there have been a lot of issues lately, and maybe skimming through online isn't doing the trick.
And I would also like to, if council sees any mistakes, because they're, no matter what, no matter how many papers we do, please bring it to administration's notice as soon as possible, because we will be able to get that information, distribute it by email immediately, get the information out, so then it can be reviewed, so we're not delaying potentially something for, because right now, we went from having meetings once a month to now at least back onto our two times a month meetings. But we can get this stuff approved, because there are still going to be mistakes, and I would just recommend council, if you find anything where you're asking for more information that's not included in your packet, I do thank some of you, because I do get those calls, let us know so we can get it rather, because we can't make the changes here at the last second.
Our, our job is to go through the packet that's provided, not to QC the packet too when we're reviewing it. I'm supposed to be able to depend on the information I have, because this takes a long time, because we have three days sometimes to review it, sometimes even less, I guess. I'm supposed to be able to look at what we have and rely upon it, that this is equipped for us to be able to look at it, have our question, where we can master this information, know the questions why I ask, and have a preliminary decision, or have each and every one of these very important diverse agenda items, covering transportation asset plans, buying time clocks, to, you know, doing special assessment districts, not to sit there and go do the job that's supposed to be done before it lands on our porch of, oh, oh, we don't have a copy of the RFP, the RFB, or the actual bids or proposals that were submitted that we're asking council to approve. This is supposed to be ready for us to go, so in that limited window we have over a weekend, we can read 1,000 pages without having to think, oh, my God, there's information missing here, there's a typo here, there's this here, there's this here. Now, make sure you get to administration prior to 7 o'clock on your workday before the meeting, so you can email us, and then we can all at 5:30, 6:00 PM on Monday, read the information, because sometimes my preparation for the meeting extends until 5:30 PM on Monday, because there's so much, and because all of us have other things we're doing too in addition to making sure we are very prepared for the meetings. That's all I'm asking. The full-time people, please put a little bit more time into reviewing these things. So us part-timers up here on two and a half days can be prepared to make some very important decisions on behalf of the residents we represent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen?
I would just add to that, this is one of those smaller ones in terms of related to the whole police and fire renovation, but we had issues with the renovations of the house in that bid, issues here, just information not being included. These are the small stuff. Big stuff comes October 7th, right? Where we got to approve millions and millions of dollars at that one. So anything that's required to be in there, it's got to be there. Yep. And that, but it, that's all.
Mr. Rabello?
Before, before we take this vote, I, I just want someone to verify that these numbers are correct and that we just don't have them, how we normally would get them.
Yes, there's no errors on their bids, and then they were checked again, obviously, and so everything lined up, and so those are the numbers that were submitted in their proposals.
Okay, because it wouldn't be good to hit, be voting on numbers that weren't right. Okay, I think everybody would agree with that. Okay, thank you.
Moved by Mr. Vitale, supported by Mr. Frederick, to award this to Palmer Moving Services with, in, in 24 hours, to have the information, the RFP, et cetera, that was put online to the city council, and then also on, bring back on the 16th, the contract. You'll have enough time to get that contract here on the 16th.
I'll get with Bob, and we'll discuss the outline for you.
So all in favor of that?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You were, five to two, it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
8B is to request to approve the contract for Intellitime and attendance system upgrade. This was tabled for the last meeting, we had a couple of questions, warranty was one of them, so, Nick?
So I'm returning with responses from Intellitime regarding the concerns from the last meeting. If you have the sheet that was outlined, one, two, three, four, five, the first two were regarding the warranties, and I did confirm that the warranties are three months for the time clocks from the manufacturer.
Okay.
After that, the support does come from Intellitime for troubleshooting and diagnosis of any, of any issues.
Okay, anything else?
That's just for the first two. The third concern was of The third concern was of the SAS rider.
Yep.
The abbreviation concerns, the confusion of that. The software as a service is a technological service that the product is utilized on. And the SASS is the title of the standards.
SAS governing SAS.
Yes. So it's just the title of the standards that are promised by the Intelletime for that, for this product or for the service. Sorry. And then four, regarding the laws by California, which is in the contract that is now Michigan under the contract. It's under the new contract, the updated version two contract. And the number five, they replaced schedule one with exhibit D, which was, is now appropriate.
Mr. Vitale.
So a three month warranty on a very expensive hardware is not very long. But if I am reading this correctly, it says that these are also covered under the Intelletime annual support agreement where they handle the diagnostics, troubleshooting, shipping and exchange of any failed clocks. Handle means they pay for? I would assume.
So the difference between the two was still a little confusing to me and I tried to get that answer. But if we were to go based off of the first contract and what we're dealing with, with them right now, yes. So when we send them the clocks, they pay for the shipping. They pay for shipping it back. They troubleshoot, they don't, do not charge us for them and they return them working. And that's always been the case.
Including the provisioning of an onsite hot spare.
Yes.
So I guess if they want to charge us for another clock, we'll just keep their spare forever.
Yes, as long as, yeah.
As long as nothing else goes down.
Okay. And that's, it's kind of a sad warranty on an expensive piece of hardware. But if we've worked with it that long and if they're agreeing that they're responsible for diagnostics, troubleshooting, and I would, I would say that there's really short of, you know, one of our people destroying a time clock, there's really nothing we can do to damage one.
We haven't had a situation where we haven't sent one back and they haven't returned it working.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'm satisfied.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. First, a comment, I guess. I really appreciate you writing down the questions that we had asked. I know, you know, mine were referring to different pages and paragraphs. So I know you probably went through the tape of the meeting and did them accurately. And you got us answers and I could look at the questions asked, looked at the answers given. I really do appreciate that level of care and consideration you took and for working with the company on getting the answers. You even did better on number four than I had asked for. I was just having a question about the governing law and you got them to change personal jurisdiction venue and governing law to Michigan versus California. So if we ever have to sue them or vice versa, Bob doesn't get a free trip to California. So sorry, Bob, you just have to go downtown. But that's, you know, even more favorable to us than what was initially in the contract, which was California, 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 and then for one reason, Washington. I was just asking about the discrepancy. And they changed it to Michigan for us, everything. So that's actually much more favorable. And I, a lot of times these companies, you work with them, they have a lot of customers, they have a lot of customers, clients, wherever they want to call them, they want to keep things uniform, which is why you get these form contracts. They don't want to have a bunch of different terms for a bunch of different clients have to keep. They want to keep things. That's why they use their form as uniform as, as possible. So I mean, that's pretty good that they changed that for us. Thank you for getting the corrected exhibit because what they had previously was, again, they were piecing these things together pretty sloppy. So this was actually very enjoyable to read. I mean, it was last time too, but for a different reason. This was good to see that some of the, at least we had some answers, even if they might not be the most satisfactory answers on some of them that we were hoping for. But it's nice that the care and consideration was put there. I can tell. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Nick, you know what? I should have included that too. I do want to thank you for the level that you went through to take all this down, write it. Although I would only say, next time, please put it at the front because then I wouldn't have had to read the whole contract again looking for the changes and then found the sheet that had the changes. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frederick.
Move to approve the Intelletime system upgrade and purchase order for 98, 263 and 56 cents.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seven to zero. Thank you. Nine F, nine consent agenda.
I'd like to separate G and L.
I would like to separate F, J, and also I had L.
So make a motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, H and I and K.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Nine F, Ms. Rusi.
Nine F. This is the signing the public hearing for vacation of a portion of Hazelwood Street within 27900 Rockwood, between Rockwood and Little Math. This is being done pursuant to a notification from M.D. Accurate.
Correct.
And I guess my question is, this was brought before the planning commission for recommendation in April. Reading through the emails, it sounds like there was some maybe time sensitivity where the state, you know, we're doing this pursuant to a state request. Once the planning commission made the recommendation in April, why wasn't this brought to council earlier? Given the fact that we have to set this notice for a public hearing now and that won't be set till October 21 and for this process, given the planning commission made the recommendation way back on April 9?
I'm not sure that I can fully answer your question. I believe that the city planner was working with the schools. So this portion of Hazelwood, as I understand it, runs through the middle of Kennedy Middle School parking lot. So I believe she was working with the schools and then subsequently with DPW and MDOT. But I can certainly find out.
Okay, because they had, I mean, there is enough information back in April 9th for the planning commission to make a recommendation. Usually, once the planning commission makes a recommendation, everything's in line and then it just comes to us for approval. So I'm just kind of curious what was being worked on then between April 9th, when the planning commission made the recommendation? What additional information will we have that the planning commission didn't have on April 9? It just, usually it's the planning commission has everything, makes a recommendation based upon everything and we get the same information in addition to the recommendation.
Sure. And I, I can't fully answer your question, but I will find out and we're just going back to council.
Yeah, just again, wondering the process because I saw, like, when was this heard? It's like, wow, April.
Yeah.
It's.
It was some time ago.
Yeah, it was spring. And like I said, it sounds like there had been maybe some time sensitivity given this is being done pursuant to a request from MDOT. So, okay, thank you.
I will find out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Are we sure this wasn't in front of us before? I remember having this discussion.
It's deja vu, Chris.
I, I remember having the discussion on this and thinking that we have to prove to them that there isn't a road under a parking lot?
I, I am not certain.
I think this was already, I think this was in front of us. I remember it. Because I, I live in that neighborhood. So I do remember that and I remember, I thought, this is ridiculous. We have to prove to the state we don't have this road? No one else remembers that?
For Kennedy Middle School, I'm.
Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Jefferson. Jefferson Middle School.
Okay. I'm not familiar with the conversation, to be honest with you. So I'm, I don't believe it has been before you before. But I will verify that tomorrow.
Doesn't matter. Mr. Rubello?
Well, it, it does say on here, MDOT has requested the city to vacate the street again and notify them once it has been completed in order to update.
Maybe Liz presented it the first time.
I know that there has been research done on whether or not this has come to council previously and that we couldn't find the vacation. The city planner could not find the actual vacation documents. So that was the request to bring it back again to council.
So this is tied up in Act 51 money?
This would be part of that, right.
Okay.
Where we receive.
The impact it would have financially on St. Clair Shores.
I will have to verify that.
Because it says, yeah, it just says NA on here.
I don't believe it is, it is a significant portion of the road. So I'm not sure that our per mile reimbursement, I think it would be nominal. But I can certainly, you know, do the length and create an estimate.
Yeah, I don't know. It just, it looks like it goes under a, under a tennis court since.
It goes for a school, yeah.
I don't know what's the advantage. I don't, I don't know what the.
It would have been vacated at some point in the past or the school wouldn't have been able to build over it.
If you don't, you didn't know if it has any budget impact on us or money or whatever.
The money would be nominal for those miles of road.
Doesn't shake it off, no.
It's really little.
It's very small.
When MDOT takes the calculation, they take how much road, local roads and major roads we have. And then there's a formula that goes into it. So yes, this would be taking approximately 250 feet of all the miles of road, local roads that we have. As Denise said, we're talking.
Sort of show up on Google Maps as.
It's still showing up as Google Maps as the tennis courts. I mean, it is tennis courts now. It is there. It's MDOT, just for their official record. They didn't show it as, they show it as a road. And when we, Liz Coto, our city planner, went back and tried to find any documentation from, which would have been the distance pass of when this would have happened and was unable to locate any information that showed that had been to council before. And then if it had been to council, then MDOT would have been able to just change this and make it not an official road. So it's just really for Act 51, Act 51 requirement of taking a dedicated road that we have and it's already been vacated.
And the planning commission recommended this. Okay, well, I'll make a motion.
This is just to set the hearing.
Oh, this is the hearing.
Yeah. Yep, that's it. You just set the public hearing.
Right.
For October 21st.
Yeah.
Now he's not interested in making the motion. It's just a hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make, I'll support that. I'll support his motion.
Supported by Ms. Rusi to set the public hearing for October 21st, 2024, to vacate that portion of Hazelwood and Rockwood Street between Little Math. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Nine G, Mr. Karen.
Thank you. I believe Renee had to step out.
She did.
It looked like a personal emergency going on. So Mr. Lynn, if you could take back to her. It's really just a question in the memo because I didn't really see anything referenced in the engagement letter. But it has on there, as part of the audit procedures, Yo and Yo will be selecting a member of city council to direct specific inquiries to as part of their risk assessment process. However, any members of city council are invited to contact Yo and Yo to discuss any matters they feel as though they may be of audit significance or areas of concern. And that would be to Ali at Yo and Yo. So I guess I'm not sure how that coalesces with the actual motion when Yo and Yo was hired, that they reach out to every member of council and whether the selecting a member to direct specific inquiries to is different than reaching out to council members before they start. Because I know I did have a conversation with Ali. It was actually a very good insightful conversation that we had already. I don't know if other council members had the opportunity yet. But something like looking for clarification on that. Perhaps Renee can provide that this week, just so we have the roles and responsibilities understood.
Yeah.
All right.
I know per your, I think it was your request as well to have Ali or Yo and Yo reach out per their.
Well, that's part of the motion, yes.
The motion is part of their contract. So I know that was relayed to Ali and I don't know if this was just, oh, hey, have them reach out. But I'll get with Renee and make sure that happens.
Okay.
I've spoken to Ali Barnes too. All right.
Move to approve.
Move to receive and file.
Or receive and file. Support.
Who made the motion down there?
One of us did.
Mr. Karen, motion to receive and file and supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Nine J, Ms. Rusi.
Hey, thank you. Real quick, the PO we received had a couple of issues with. I had emailed Vicki bringing those up. And on your desk right now is a updated PO that is corrected. So I just want to thank Vicki for acting on that quickly and promptly and getting us a corrected PO. So with that, I will, this is, and this is just issuing the PO pursuant to the contract we had approved or this council approved previously. So move to approve the updated PO that was on her desk for nine J.
Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Rubello. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Karen on nine L.
Yeah, so this is.
I, no, L.
L.
Oh, sorry.
JK L.
Yeah, so this is the receiving review, the 2024 proposed transportation asset management plan. And so I think first question, I sent, when this was first forwarded to council, maybe about a month ago, I had asked the question of what member of the city manager's office was going to review it first? And Matt, have you reviewed it? Okay. Did you provide any different input than what was presented to us?
I did provide.
Oh, you're, you've got your mic there, sir. Thank you.
I did provide notes to the city engineer on items that I was able to catch after just a couple of months on the job. I'm sure I didn't get everything, but I tried to provide him as much feedback as possible.
Okay, but that's not in this draft though, right?
Some of those changes are likely included. They may not be redlined.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we didn't get redlined version. So it's, okay. So appreciate you doing that. So some additional things, just higher, higher level stuff I want to point out. Just because I think we did have some major changes in how things are being categorized.[1559.22] Um, but basically, it's like, you know, we had, um, the city engineer took it upon himself to do the Paser evaluation, um, instead of having one of the outside engineering firms do that. And basically, in terms of the two charts that are in here on pages five and six, um, shows a dramatic difference in our roads from 2021 to 2024. For example, we had, in 2021, 40% of our roads were rated as good. Now it's less than 10%. Um, and, and, or, uh, and somehow poor roads, we only had 8% being poor, and that went up to 23. But there's no explanation of why. So I don't know whether it's the state shifting the goalposts, because I think before it was seven, eight, nine, 10 were good. You know, six, five, four were fair, three and below were poor. They changed it to where four is now poor, and the other ones were adjusted. So I don't know if they moved the goalposts around, and that's part of it. But then I also know, like, in looking at the next figure, um, for local roads, we went from 30% being poor in 2021 to roughly 60% being poor. So now we're, you know, over half the city being a poor, in a poor category, and 15% was good, and that went down to 10. Again, don't know how much of that was moving the goalposts, or whether that's, um, the city engineer's evaluation of the roads. And I do know there was a chart in here elsewhere that does show the kind of distribution by number, and it does have a very large number that categorizes four. I don't know how that relates to how HRC did it, or Hennessy did it, but with local roads, they don't change that much. They don't have the high traffic, they don't have heavy traffic, you know, so these don't break down in three years. We didn't have an earthquake. That could destroy a lot, right? So, um, I guess I'd ask to really look through that and really sense check that, um, before we report that to the state. And then the other thing we had in terms of, the main issue was, hey, what are we going to improve? And that map is page nine, and I guess one of its, uh, it's purple, light purple, and the roads are going to get changed or in light blue. It's kind of really hard to tell, but it also cuts off the city of Grostale, so the top six of the city is not on the map. And one of the roads that's supposed to be improved, Playview, is in that top part of it. So I guess a, a better, either for the projects that are going to be considered every year, like have tables laid out so that we actually see what the roads are.
Okay.
Um, rather than trying to find it on the map. But then also, too, kind of separating in categories, which ones are going to be our local responsibility? Which ones are tip projects with the state? Because that's contingent on them being involved. It's just not our choice.
Right.
Um, and then also, we do, significant amount of roads are just sectional replacements, not full road replacements, that that ought to be captured as well. And I did not see that in here, or whether in the pavement, um, asset document that was also attached.
Will we look at that? I, I do, and Councilman Karen, as you are well aware, Paser is on the worst section of road. So I would, you know, um, say that if, when you're reflecting that 60% of the roads are poor, it's not the entire road necessarily. It's the section that is the worst section of road.
So if you find one flag that is totally.
Destroyed.
Right, for example.
It could be categorized as poor.
You know, my street, that it was a new section that was added, but property owner knocked down a tree, it landed on the road, destroyed the new section. So that would mean the new section is no longer eight or nine.
Right.
It's down to three or four, because someone dropped a tree on it and broke it all up.
Sure.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. So I think that, that's just got to get sense checked. And then one thing that we did point out in the last one, to clarify, this goes back on page 18. Um, in terms of traffic light assets, um, we don't maintain, it, it says here that they're operated by McCombs County and maintained by the city. We don't maintain them, we just pay the bill.
Okay.
The maintenance is still all by the county. We just have to pay our allotment to them. So just make sure that's corrected. And as I go through these documents, I may have some other edits later this week, but just to get those major ones highlighted and, and to just help that, that first section, the TAMP, is actually a community, you know, it reads that wanting to be a communication plan. And I think just with some of the formatting and how it's being presented, it's not really getting that part of the job done. So kind of just maybe work on that with Mike.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Rabello. Um, Denise, do we have any type of ratings? I don't know if the Paser is, handles the alleys. Do we have anything like that, like which alleys, city-owned alleys? Are good and what are bad?
Right, there was a list that was created under the previous city engineer with a rating of the alleys. I believe it was a 10, and I believe I sent that actually out to you and the mayor. But it had conditions on it of the alleys.
Do you know what year that was made?
It would have been in '22.
That's, that's relatively.
Recent. Yes, it's very recent, because that was when we were looking at reestablishing the alley program.
Right.
If council remembers.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Rusi, that's from the.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, starting to go through the, um, TAMP plan. And I have the copy that was delivered to my house, which may be different from the one that we received in our packet that was on the jump drive. I hadn't looked at that. I was looking at the one that was received. So this may already be addressed, I'm not sure, but it doesn't sound like it from John's point. I had the same thing about the signal assets. We had brought that up during the, the first term earlier of this, um, earlier this year. It says SES exercises awareness of the traffic signals, and it does say we maintain them. Uh, our goal is to upgrade and maintain. We conduct replacements, rehabilitation. We adhere to regular maintenance and servicing policies, and I don't think we do any of those things.
We don't do any of those things. McCombs County does.
It's the same issue that was in the previous term of this, which this one does have a lot of improvements compared to the one we addressed earlier this year. So this does represent, um, some positive steps going forward. The same issues regarding the culvert asset page, which is the one page previous. Uh, we exercise awareness of its culvert assets, and then the next sentence, at present, we do not track inventory data of its culvert assets, and we list some goal, and then we list a policy, and that just doesn't, I think this needs some clarification, too.
Okay.
Uh, same type of issues I think we had brought up last time about, about this page, it's similar to the traffic ones. It's funny to say we exercise awareness, then we don't track inventory of them, which I don't even know if we have any.
We have, well, we recently did the culvert at Champaign Park.
Yeah.
Where we had the leak. So we do actually look at them. Um, do we have an inventory and track them?
Yeah, that, it's just, it's, it's funny for, just to say, we exercise awareness. Probably don't keep track of them. It just, it doesn't seem congruent to me. So we might just want to refresh this section a little bit, because it's some of the same issues where it just doesn't read, and, and it brings up more questions than the answers, and the plan shouldn't be doing that. Okay, thank you.
The motion approved to receive.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick on 9L, receive, uh, receive and review the 2024 transportation and asset management plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item 10, Mr. Lent, updates and follow-ups from prior council meetings.
Ms. Rusi asked for a call report from Seresa Broken Down by Community. Director Lisi sent the information to Ms. Rusi on 8/20/2024. The information is also attached.
Yep, um, follow-up on that. We got the St. Clair Shores information. Did we get the information for the other members of Seresa?
I, I can make sure that this is.
Yeah, because I asked for Broken Down by Community, and I, I did want St. Clair Shores specific information, too, but I would appreciate seeing the information from other communities, just how we compare and track, especially given that this is how our fees are, are, um, computed. Thank you. No, I do appreciate the information we have received, to this point, how it's laid out. I just would like more information from our, um, fellow Seresa members. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Karen asked for Communication Department's strategy for ruling out information. Aaron and Steve are working with Matt on the communication plan. Uh, Mr. Vitale asked if we could include some ads in the calendar to help cover the cost. If council is in agreement, this can be added to the next, uh, actually, if council is in agreement, uh, we can actually add these to the paper, uh, or the calendar. We're going to need to determine if there is like a percentage that council would like to see, because I know at one point, uh, council felt that there was too many ads. I know Chris mentioned not going over heavy with ads, but maybe a small amount. Uh, but what that is, and then Aaron and the communications team and Steve will be able to work on creating a set of ads that we would like to see, if it's a dollar figure, if it's a percentage. Um, if we could just get some feedback on that, I think from council, that would be great. Mr. Vitale, uh, sorry, Mr. Frederick asked to discuss the contract and position opening for inspection services. Uh, a meeting with Roseville, um, the assistant city manager and the voting official, uh, occurred actually today. Um, and we did have a long discussion on ways that we can improve our services and what we're looking at, uh, to be able to improve the quality of, of what our businesses and residents are receiving. Uh, Mr. Karen asked for a list of where the Christmas lights are being hung, a list of all, uh, locations are being completed. And I will have a email out to council this week, um, and then also I'll provide that into the next, uh, council packet. Mr. Vitale asked for the resident's contract information for 22524 Euclid. Uh, that was passed along to Mr. Vitale.
I, I did make contact with that resident and, uh, have interacted with him. If, uh, the chief's here at the end of the meeting, I'd like to talk about some of that with him.
Uh, Ms. Rusi mentioned the Parks Halloween event and asks not to shorten the timeframe. The Activities Committee has been made aware of this.
We didn't, and I've communicated to both Mr. Karen and Ms. Rusi, uh, that it'll be the same as last year.
Okay. Um, and then the next one was, actually, Mr. Karen mentioned the same thing in a different format. Um, and then Mr. Vitale mentioned Taylor Elementary has not done any construction or cleanup. He asked if they pulled permits for the sidewalk they replaced. No permits have been pulled for the sidewalk. The city engineer did do a site visit, and an email was sent to the facilities manager asking for silt sacks in the catch basin and sweeping where any equipment is tracking dirt. A reminder was also sent to them to pull the permits for the work in the right of way.
Now, they're going, they're going to do this. They're going to pull the permits, not just for future work, but for what they did.
That was stated yes to them. And obviously, as we mentioned earlier with our things, we don't have civil infractions there, but we do have a notice of violation that we could go that route until our civil infractions are in place.
Um, I did, there was one more thing I would have wanted on that update. That was on the, the former hydroponics store with the big hole in it that's just east of, uh, the mobile station. Where are we at on that? Have we got an NOV on that?
The request for a complaint warrant was issued last week. I did reach out to the property owner. He never returned my call. But, uh, the code enforcement supervisor actually sent that request over to the city attorney last week for a complaint warrant.
Okay, so are we faster now to go under the new adopted ordinances by the time those are published?
Are we?
Or are we, in other words, do we have a potential court date that's like, I don't know, off in March or something? Would it be faster to go under, after we've published the new ordinance?
Potentially, yes.
And pursue under that?
Yes, potentially, yes.
Okay, and we could, we have that option, right?
We would have that option, yes.
Okay.
I also did get an email back from Wayne Satterfield saying that they would have their groundskeeper take care of the tailor issues, and that they would forward to Barton Mallow the, uh, information to come pull permits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, comments by individual council members. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Um, I guess number one, seeking an update, if we have one. I know in a previous agenda, we had, um, Sage Creek, a new winery that wants to move into the city, uh, not making the wine there, but serving it, uh, was on the agenda. Unfortunately, they, there was some miscommunication between what they needed to submit and the process they had to be held to under the ordinance for their license that they need to do off-premise in terms of where it's manufactured servicing. Do we know where they are? I haven't seen them back on the agenda yet.
I don't know who they were working with.
Um, they emailed me. They're reevaluating their interest in coming to the city.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate. Okay, um, next question. Uh, Bird Scooters, I know we received, I think this might be from Matt, an update. I know a lot of residents, we just got this, hey, I know a lot of residents are wondering, where are these Bird Scooters? I hate the Bird Scooters. I know some people like them, though, and there has been some notice and questioning from residents who do utilize and release notice on, hey, where do these Bird Scooter go? Do you have the update on that for everybody?
Yes, ma'am. I did, uh, send, uh, forwarded counsel an email this morning. Uh, we were in contact with Jimmy Gillum, uh, who is the bird representative for City St. Clair Shores. Uh, he used the term pause, uh, based on their local contractor relationship. Uh, they have paused, uh, their, their partnership with the, uh, city, and we're looking to see how that complies with the existing operating agreement we have with them. Uh, since they did not use the word "end," uh, they made it sound like this was a temporary situation, and that, uh, they leave the option open available later that Bird Scooters would return to the city.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because it did incorporate, one of the follow-ups I was going to ask is, you know, what surprises me is that they can completely not only just reduce the inventory, given the inventory was, I think, part of the agreement, but get rid of all the inventory, go from how many we had out there spread through the city to zero, and just totally pause. I have heard from residents who have money on the app still because they would use it, you know, like credits or whatever. I've never used them, not a scooter person. But they, you know, they have this money that they do utilize, or these credits that they do utilize for these scooters in the city, and all of a sudden, there are no scooters. So we do have residents who are on the hook financially for whatever they have on these apps. And it just surprises me that they can pause a program unilaterally without doing a sort of notification to us, given we had to go and pursue an answer from them, and that's how we all learned, you, you know, you include, hey, yes, this isn't just, you know, whatever, this is, we are officially pausing the program with the city. It seems like it has to be some issue. So if you could get back to us with that, like I said, I, I'm happy they're not blocking sidewalks anymore, quite honestly, but I know I'm not, you know, that's not the unanimous viewpoint out there. So, given the fact this full body did decide, minus a couple of votes, maybe, to enter into, or at least one, to enter into this contract, I think we need to look at this and really make sure, um, we want to continue with them, where our options are, are they in violation of it right now? And if any, we want to pursue some sort of relationship, maybe with another company, going, at least going into net spring, maybe, given, you know, the remaining scooter season may be dwindling. Um, we want to make sure we have something up for net spring, I think, if the rest of the body who likes scooters wants to do that, so.
I am absolutely pursuing those answers for a council.
I appreciate that. I would be totally fine with not seeing one of these things blocking people from using the sidewalk, but that's fine. And finally, another question. I know we were working on some updates to the water billing in terms of, in terms of, in terms of putting the terms on what the different fees are and everything on the bill, like on the back. Where are we with that process?
Uh, myself, as well as city assessor and the communications department have all been working together. Uh, we've got a brand-new format for the water bills. I think there's some information coming out about that in the upcoming newsletter. Uh, the, both the front and the back, uh, have been revised, and I think we'll make better communication tools for our residents.
Okay, great. And, you know, in terms, I say in terms of a lot, in term, which, when you're talking about terms, gets a little confusing. In terms of the terms, uh, for the water bill, I think having the explanation about how the different fees are assessed will be helpful. Following that, maybe we can do the same, uh, for the taxes, the different tax bills, given there's a lot of line items on that. They're not from the city. They're from, you know, other taxing entities. I'm not saying we put these on the bill, because there's a lot of lines, but maybe something on the website where if people do have questions, we can direct them to something like, DIA, this, you know, this was approved by the voters back in this, this goes to the zoological authority, the, or not, I'm sorry, that would be for the zoo, the DIA, this was approved by voters, this goes to the Institute of Art Authority, the different, you know what I mean? Just explain what some of these line items are, because some of them are pretty obvious. But I even get questions from people who don't know what PNF means. PNF, operating, PNF, pension, oh, that's police and fire. Okay, you know, we're used to that, because that's the terminology we use. But, um, I think in term, in terms of, um, in the same vein of going forward and trying to improve the understanding, communication of, you know, when we take money from people, which is, that's what we do, even if we're giving to other taxing entities, I think the more communication we have, so people understand what these line items mean on these various bills would be helpful. And I guess I'm not saying we put these necessarily in the tax bill, but having this type of information easily accessible on the website where we can direct people to that would be super helpful. I know it varies by school district, but we can put the different school,
Right.
you know, things on there.
Yes, we're hoping to consolidate all those into a single easily, easy-to-read area, and then note for residents how much of the tax dollars that they pay at the counter actually are retained by the city, and how many of them are sent to other jurisdictions.
On behalf of another entity. And then finally, um, I know the library website is undergoing an overhaul. Do we have any updates on that?
It's, uh, extremely close to actually going live. I will probably be able to send even a draft of what it looks like to council by the end of this week, so they can actually review the draft version, and hopefully we'll be live by, in a couple of weeks.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I actually, just yesterday, my, um, fiance was going on to like do something. He's like, there's no website anymore. I'm like, yes, but soon it will be even better and updated. So, um, I'm glad to hear, because I, I know if he has that question, he's an avid library user. We have a lot of other people out there, too, who might be wondering what's going on with that. So that's very cool. That's it.
I'm very pleased right now with, uh, we're close to the final draft.
I think, again, it, it will just help residents be able to maintain and have that relationship with the city and the services we provide. So I think that will be very, um, very much improvement. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Thank you. Um, first, for Bob, I had sent you an email back on, uh, August 7th regarding, uh, a zoning meeting, and kind of more procedural questions from that. So if you could, uh, go back in the archive and just kind of send me a reply on that one, I'd appreciate it. Also, want to get a list of the trees that were removed from the right of way by the, uh, the company that we're under contract with, for going back, say, two years. Reason being, yeah, I, I see on, when I'm out walking my dog in my neighborhood, where trees were taken down, and, you know, maybe some seed was put down, but grass never grew back, and it's just a pile of dirt. There's probably four in my neighborhood that are like that, but I'd like to just confirm it's just not my neighborhood and that. So if I can get that list, so I can just kind of take a drive around and just kind of check. I appreciate that. In the checks, I did see that we wrote another, it was like $2,300 to AEW for DDA plans. And I don't know if council's ever received what AEWs, if they put, if, well, one of it, if their plans for DDA were ever finalized by the DDA, and were, a copy of that may exist that council could have, since we paid a decent amount of that by now.
Yeah, I don't know if we've approved it, but even if we haven't, we're glad to send it to you.
Okay. All right. Um, and last thing, in terms of, uh, you know, it asked for some background info in terms of how we responded to the claims that were submitted in terms of the basement flooding that occurred at about 130 to 140 homes back on August 2nd. In reading through the email chain between, um, the assurance adjuster, DPW director, eventually city manager, without getting too far into details, but it, it, it just kind of felt like it was very casual in terms of the eventual result of whatever claim was submitted, we're denying them. I would have hoped that what would have been included in that exchange was details about the. about the storm. Yep, there was a lot of rain, there was a lot of rain in a very short period of time. We know how much rain it was, we know the timeframe. Think some of that ought to be recorded and documented, especially when we're dealing with the insurance company. We do know there are three streets that had over 10 on those streets. So I mean, in my mind, that's suspect, that could be an issue on that street. I had a follow-up email there asking what happened with those three streets? And the response I got back was they're all inspected and there were no obstructions. Okay? That should have been documented of, hey, we knew we had these areas of concern, here's what our department did to investigate those, and here were our findings, and here's where it's documented. Because nowadays, any one of these, there's one law firm in Detroit, this is what they specialize in doing because a week after that storm, everyone in the city got a letter from them saying, hey, if you had damages, call us. So if anyone takes a bite at that, they're coming back for that information. So I think that when we're dealing with, people are submitting damages to the city and it just seems like a very casual conversation. That just seems off to me. And I think we've got the detail.
We do. A lot of the detail is relied in phone conversations with the agent. So if Brian makes a call.
Guess what? That does nothing in court. Documented.
But Brian has the documentations of every time they went out, all the detail, all that kind of stuff. And he, and Brian does, he does a good job of, well, the sewer department does a good job of documenting that stuff.
But that's the thing, it's one thing to have documented over in DPW, but where you've actually engaged and you're showing it, yep, here's what we gave insurance, here's why they decided it, you know, because actually the email chain started with the insurance adjuster saying, hey, I've got claims, I've got people calling me, what do I tell them? It's them asking, hey, we need this info to reply back to. So we just need to get that tightened up going forward. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. First off, I did get some compliments on the tie today. This is a Wigs for Kids tie. And I wore it tonight because our annual gala is next Tuesday, September 10th, from 5:30 to 9:30 PM. And it actually has gotten so big, we had to go out to Pennas of Sterling Heights. So if anybody, there are still a few tickets available, call me. 586-808-3478 if you're looking for tickets. Secondly, two separate calls over the weekend, which was very strange, that people who had paid their sewer line warranty of America bill and then got a cancellation notice and then got another invoice. And I'm just wondering if, is that something that we can look into? Or I know it's individually by house. I know I have, I have the same insurance. I know that we have talked about that up here as a company that we sort of, we didn't, we didn't endorse them, but we said, hey, it's legit. I'm just wondering if we have heard anything else internally?
Internally, I have not. I've developed a legal to give their recommendation now.
Okay. All right, Bob, I can call you offline on that.
Yes, okay.
All right. Next up, as the, as it gets into scholarship season, which is early on, but this is, this is the time that everybody's starting to look at it. The VFW sent out some stuff, I think we all got it. And part of that is they've got the Voice of Democracy, it's an audio essay program provided to high school students. If you want to learn more about it, the national first place winner gets $35,000. And then they've got a bunch of $1,000 scholarships as well. If you want to find out how to do it, by the way, midnight October 31st is when everything is due, you can go to the VFW website and find out, is America Today our forefather's vision? That's one of them. The second one is Patriots Pen, which is, they've got, first place is a $5,000 winner and they've got some $500 ones as well. You can download that entry form again on the Viet, National VFW website. And then they also have a Young America's Creative Patriotic Art Contest, which I thought was rather interesting, that it wasn't just a scholarship for writing something out that had to do with art. And that, that amount is $37,000. And there's several other dimensions to that, all on the VFW website if you want to take a look. And then also, the, our own VFW Bruce Post Auxiliary Parking Lot Sale coming up on Saturday, September 14th, from 9:00 to 2:00. It's sort of a community yard sale, vintage items, craft vintage items, vendors, household items and crafters, all helping our local vets in need. And by the way, if you want to sell something at the parking lot sale, that costs $30 for two parking spaces. And it's again, from 9:00 to 2:00, Saturday, September 14th. All you have to do is, is send a note to Teresa Kujo, which is T-H-E-R-E-S-A-K-U-J-O@gmail.com. And then they'll show you how to make a check payable with VFW Bruce Post and get your spot. So that's kind of cool. So go there and shop, go there and sell. All right?
Or both.
Or both, or you could do both, which I know you will. All right. So just quickly, a little bit of information about the library. Television trivia night is Monday, September 23rd, 6:30 PM, with registration beginning on September 9th. To register, please speak with a librarian over the phone or in person. Teams of up to four are competing. Those registering alone or with smaller numbers than four will be matched together. Storytime registration begins September 9th at 9:00 AM. The session will run from September 17th through October 16th. Space is limited. Registration is available through the online calendar and can also be done in person or by phone, 586-771-9020, or by email to scs youth@libcoop.net. And that's really Library Cooperative, but libcoop.net. Children may only be registered for one storytime and all children that attend must be registered. Take and make bags for kids ages two and up are available starting today. Bags with the supplies to make a coffee filter apple are available and a bin inside the youth services room and are available during library hours while supplies last. Children ages six to eight are invited to join instructor Jen Perkins for a Little Yogi Yoga, a 30-minute playful yoga class that includes movement, mindfulness, and a story to create a calm mind. This program is on Wednesdays at 6:30 PM, September 25th through October 25th. It's suitable for all abilities and sensory friendly. You may bring your own mat or one will be provided. A waiver must be signed by all participants and adults must stay there with their kids. Registration begins September 16th and is available online or through the website or again by phone or through scs youth@libcoop.net. September, very important, is library card signup month. We always try to get a blast going with new library cards to celebrate. We're inviting adults age 17 plus participate in a special Transformers themed hide and seek event at the library. Every Monday in September, we'll hide a new transformer keychain somewhere in the library. Clues to help you find these will be hidden and treasures will be posted on, these hidden treasures will be posted on our Facebook page and available at the adult service desk. The hunt will continue weekly until all keychains are found with additional clues provided along the way. And then exciting new additions are available for library online resources. The library now has access to transparent language, allowing access to a large number of languages, which include ASL. Comic Plus offers unlimited access to thousands of digital comics, graphic novels and manga. And Consumer Reports Online offers unlimited access to 10,000-plus products and services review. And we're looking forward to the new website coming live. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the police department for helping keep a lid on our Harper cruise there. I did notice the stepped up enforcement. Appreciate that because, you know, as much as I like to cruise, there's other people that, you know, think it's a place to do an eighth mile drag pass. So I did see some enforcement out there and, because I don't want us to get that rep of being too lenient for that. And I'll have to talk to the chief about something, it was posted online about that, but definitely the message seemed to get through. So thanks for that. And thanks, everybody, for a good cruise. It's amazing, you know, if I, I hate to say this, but it's like, I feel like if it was ever days I could guarantee it wouldn't rain, I would say, we usually luck out on parades and cruise, but barely by the skin of our teeth. And so this year's attendance was probably even a little down on that, but by the time the actual cruise hours were out there, it was nice, it was a good night. One other question I had from a resident is job postings for city hiring. I referred them to the website, assuming that we had something out on the website. Do we have something like that?
We do.
We do?
Yep.
And I can send the link to council so you know where to direct individuals.
Yeah, I was going to say, I haven't really been on there, job hunting. I'm sure it's on there somewhere, but, okay. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Burgess.
Just from what we've discussed earlier today, since I'm the newest council person up here, I would like to get maybe an update on what has been tabled, when it was tabled, and why and where are we at on those things? Because a lot of these things that we bring up here today are things that have happened before I was here. And I would kind of like to see that so that maybe when I get some of these information coming through, I might be able to know where to look back to. So that's the first thing. And the rest of my stop is probably good stuff. I went to the third annual, the Adult Adaptive Standout luau party that was here last week. David Bello showed up as well. And it was such an amazing, amazing thing to go to. And I encourage anybody who has a adult that has special needs to reach out to our Parks and Recs Department because they have this amazing group of individuals that put on these events. They do things weekly, they have arts and crafts, they do things at the art shack, they have zoo trips, they, just so much that's going on that I don't think everybody knows about it. It's not something that's talked about. So something that you can get ahold of the Parks and Recs Department. Also, I was asked by our fearless VFW folks to announce that they are still, have 10 foursomes that are available. The outing, the golf outing is coming up on Friday and they still have, Friday, hang on, the 13th, yeah? And they still have foursomes available. They are also still seeking donations, monetary donations, gift baskets, cards, gift cards. And they still have whole sponsorships that are available. You can get ahold of Errol Frick and his number is 313-434-8865 if you're interested. And the golf outing, of course, is going to be at the St. Clair Shores Golf Course. The Last Music in the Park, which we normally do not have in September, but we have Last Music in the Park this coming Wednesday with the Blue Water Kings Band. They'll be performing from 7:00 to 8:30 and they are, their tagline is they're a high-energy band. So what a great way to end out our summer with something high in energy. And lastly, the St. Isaac Joe's Harvest Festival is this weekend and it's this Saturday, September 7th. It's from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. It is a long day, but they have games, foods, drink, music. And the Joey V Band, which is one of my favorites, is going to be playing from 8:00 to 11:00. So a whole day, action-packed. They start out with a baseball game between the nuns and the priests and the brothers. So we attended last year and had a fabulous time. So I encourage everybody to come out, St. Isaac Joe's, this Saturday, September 7th. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bello.
I agree with you. That Joey V is incredible. So anyone that heard that, St. Isaac, should play Sunday or Saturday? He's a Saturday night guy. Incredible. Big crowds for that guy. I just was wondering about the state of our South Fire Station. How are, how are, how are things coming over there?
So construction, I mean, I could let Jamie speak, but construction has actually started the, right now, it's got a beautiful skyline and sky view, the roof's all town, they've got the, the walls down, that's all visqueined in right now. So they are, I think tomorrow, they are grounding down the cement area to create the, because right now, they'll step up. So they're grounding that down and then they're removing the concrete, putting in the new concrete pad will be tomorrow. That'll have to cure for approximately five days and they're hoping on Friday, they can start putting up the walls and rebuilding that little foyer area.
I sort of stopped in there because I saw the, the fire doors were open, which I think is great. So I was just sort of looking around going, this place has a little ways to go, yeah, to make it comfy cozy type of thing.
They're anticipating about two and a half weeks to be finished, so.
Okay, great news. The second thing I wanted to discuss is, I know no one wants to hear the word snow, but I am at this point looking for volunteer, for volunteers that want to help out, disabled people, veterans, people or people for whatever reason not able to do their snow. It's not a perfect system, but I'm hoping to get about 100 people out there. We've done those kinds of numbers in the past. So anyone out there looking for service hours, their kids, if their parents are listening right now, have them contact me on my email, okay? Because my phone sometimes gets, gets like all of ours, gets a little crazy. rebello d at scsmi.net. Please do your best to do it. It's a lot easier to keep track of all this stuff on an email instead of taxes or instant messengers. Okay. Yeah, and the other thing I wanted to bring up too a little bit about that bird scooter email that we got a little earlier. So before we enter into anything with bird scooter or anything like that, will we be notified?
So, yeah.
I guess so would be for Matt because he's a, he seems to be the bird scooter guy.
So, I mean, currently, as Matt had mentioned, when we reached out, they canceled their contract with our local vendor. They might think that they can come back and just have another local vendor and start it right back up. But I think on our behalf, because we were not satisfied and or happy, we will want to be able to see new language, new contract. And Bob will actually review that and it'll come back in front of council. Because for all intents and purposes, once they backed out, I mean, they've done it to themselves. But I think our resident, I mean, up to council's discretion, I think our residents have released either learned to love and or hate, but there are a lot that do utilize the services constantly.
Okay, thanks. The sidewalk program, District 10, that's complete? Or is it, you got to go back there?
It's.
I guess my main point is if someone's got any complaints, I know we've, we've had some in the past, can they be rectified?
The markings are complete, but the actual work has not started. So Italia is expected back in the middle to late this month to begin doing the actual work.
And that's really on the, we're talking about the north end of St. Clair Shores right here?
It is Masonic to city limits and Jefferson to city limits, or the Lake to city limit.
Okay. So that was a question a resident had for me. Music isn't over yet. Well, even though Wednesday night passes, the social district still going to October No social district this weekend. The Vacationers Band comes on September 14th. Laid-back music on September 28th. Paper covers rock, 90's current rock. So those are the next two dates, the 14th and the 28th. No social district this, this weekend coming up. So I wanted to give a shout out to the DPW. They got the limbs up pretty good after that storm. So anyone listening out there from DPW, pass along the message, great job. Another thing here is, well, I guess I can forward it because I had the same question John was asking about, about the water and the flooding and stuff. So I do have a little bit of an explanation on things that we do do. We don't sit idle. I think this is a city that does go after some of these problems. Not that problems don't exist, but I have a little bit of information, I was going to actually share it on Facebook, of some of the things we do do to try to help the situation out. And Dustin, I think, I don't know if I'm hallucinating or something, but I think priority's gotten a little bit better.
So they have. I mean, our call, I mean, it's hard to get worse. We're starting at a very low level.
Please don't say that.
But I will say our calls have astronomically dropped over the last few weeks. But I will say, our calls have astronomically dropped over the last few weeks. And I actually was going to, during my comments, this actually segues pretty good. I was actually going to give priority a lot of compliments as well on the cleanup of the trees in the storm. According to DPW, they were out there with them, picking up a lot of the trees that were out there. They brought out their chipper, and was all over, and had their contractor out here a lot. So the storm, they've done a good job, they have gotten better. I'm not going to say they're, they're good yet, but they have gotten better, and they are getting to the calls and the complaints, and they're getting response times down. So those are all things that are at least heading in the right direction.
Let me just sort of correct you on this. When they drive down the street, it's a mess when they're done. It is not even close to what GFL did. The cans are all over the place, whether the recyclable, whether the garbage ones, whether the yard waste, they're flipped over, it's an entire mess when they leave the street. So I would just tell you, it is nowhere near the way it was. Are they picking up the trash better? I would, the answer, I think, is yes, but they leave a street a mess. I don't think they, they have yet ever to put up a garbage can, just, it was just today, because I was, it was coming here, they, the entire, the whole street's just, it's just a mess.
I would, I would agree with him, there is, with the mayor, there is a mess. But as far as the calls that were, I sort of put some stuff out on Facebook for a couple of weeks, saying, hey, contact us, and, you know, there's my email address, and, and they did, they did in huge numbers, okay? You can ask those guys your priority. And I was just dishing it out back to them, and they seem to, the calls seem to go down. But I, I would agree, they do leave a, they do need a mess, and I guess.
I don't mean trash everywhere, I mean, they don't put the cans back. They don't put the cans back, it's.
And.
Hydraulic fluid.
I just wanted to say, a great 90th anniversary at the VFW Post, and Harper Cruise, to me, was amazing. Thank you Shorewood Quanus for putting that stuff on, because it literally is one of my favorite things to go to, if not my favorite thing to go to in St. Clair Shores. Have a great night. And I agree with you, Kayla does throw a great luau party, the music and the dancing. Rob, thank God we have a, a program like that in St. Clair Shores. Hats off to you and your crew, really. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. City manager report?
No report now.
Item 13, audience participation, a five-minute time limit. Views and opinions expressed under the audience participation are those of the individual citizen only, do not necessarily represent the views and opinions. The mayor, the city council, the administration of City St. Clair Shores, someone like to speak? Do we have some? Yes, ma'am. Come on up, and then you have to sign in afterwards. We just need you to, the name and the city you reside in.
Yes, hello. Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. My name is Heather Zalinski, I'm a resident of Warren.
Okay, pull that mic down so we can all, thank you.
Yes. So I'm actually here tonight on behalf of the Autism Society of Greater Detroit. I'm the executive director. I wanted to come and introduce myself, as well as our organization to you and to the city. So in the past, there were about eight affiliates in the state of Michigan that were part of the national organization, the Autism Society. National went through a little bit of a rebranding and changed their format, and came back with a model that allowed one affiliate for each state. The Autism Society of Greater Detroit is that local affiliate. In the rebranding, we're obviously growing, so we're focused on growing our services, specifically in the southeastern lower Michigan, but we serve the entire state. We are a mostly volunteer-led 501(c)(3). Our main purpose is really to be able to connect individuals with community services, community service organizations, so other nonprofit state services, and any other things that they might need. So there's a lot of needs when you're looking at individuals with autism and neurodiversities. But I don't want you guys to stop thinking about it there. When we find solutions for people with autism, it helps people with PTSD, anxiety disorders, depression, Down Syndrome. And I think we can all raise our hands and know that that impacts somebody, somebody's family, somebody's siblings. So I'm here tonight to share a little bit about what we do and what I need from you guys. What we offer is, we have some playdates, playgroups for younger children. We have a specific need for individuals as they grow out of the education system at the age of 26 in the state of Michigan. So being able to provide them some life skills, some education beyond, some education beyond those classroom skills. Being able to really survive on their own, have jobs on their own, that's really important to us. We do that through social activities, we do that through, we have a group called ASPY that works on baking, so we are teaching them life skills, as well as how to run a business. We also have a mobile decompression tent that we bring out to events, so the concerts in the park would be a great opportunity for us to have a space for people that are maybe overwhelmed to step away for a moment. We provide toolkits, and I'll explain what's in this one in just a moment. When we work with the community in those ways, we're able to identify gaps in services, so things that they don't have access to and that they need in their specific area. Once we identify those gaps, we're able to write grants and provide those grant, or provide those services in that community, whether that's building an existing organization or funding something brand new. This bag that I brought that I'll leave with council today is a toolkit that is part of a grant that we had during and just after COVID. Individuals on the spectrum have a higher rate of not getting vaccinated, because it's just too difficult. It's too difficult for the parents, it's too difficult for the individuals. So we came up with a toolkit to help those individuals. And again, it doesn't just help with vaccinations, it helps with all kinds of things. So we include things like headphones, communication boards, fidget spinners, stress balls, sunglasses, things to help. We also provide training to city councils, or police departments, or business offices that interact with individuals on the spectrum. So what I'm going to ask from you tonight is just to commit to reaching out to us if there's an opportunity for us to work with the city or individual organizations to provide our services, to provide education, or to provide resources to the individuals in your communities, so that we can help everybody live life more fully. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Ma'am, if you'd just sign in?
Yes, I understand.
Send your name and the city you reside, then you can sign in after. Thank you.
Hi, council members. I'm Mayor. My name is Trey. My newly married wife is here with me, Joel. We are the homeowners on Maple, on the end of the street next to North Shore Valet. I've been in contact with the business owner of Docs, the restaurant across the street, as well as Brian Stefanski of Benjamin Street. Worked with him with some canal stuff and some other public things. I'm sorry, I haven't met you before tonight. I, I wish it was before this, but I'm just coming to get a little clarity and to see if we can set up a hearing or meeting about what was assumed to be a driveway at my house that is not. It is a public alleyway, it is an easement owned by the city, is what I was informed after the purchase of the property. From things we've seen, it doesn't seem that that piece of property has been used as an alley for 15-plus years. There is no outlet on the other side to even constitute a throughway there. I know it'd be a lot to ask to see relinquish of property to that, to make it a proper driveway. It is paved as a driveway, it goes up to a, to a piece of land, like grass, it doesn't even go to the back of the business anymore. My garage opens to that, my fence opens to that, that was all done before I owned the property, none of that was, made privy to me before this purchase. So a lot of what we constituted into our decision of buying this property is now an all and void. So I was just hoping to come, get some clarity from you guys, if anybody has any info on that, if there's anything we could do in the future. I have reached out to the mayor on clarification on this, I haven't gotten any correspondence back. Patty, the, the restaurant owner, and the reason that this is becoming an, like, an issue, I guess you could say, has told me that she's been in front of the zoning board, and she has been told it is their job to deny any and all claims. I obviously am not going to take everything she says at 100%, just because she has her own personal interests. But I do know that, I guess the main issue here is that there is a brick wall on the back of North Shore Valet that has been there for a while. They are planning on extending that through the property line all the way to the end of the street of Maple. What that does is it's going to block, it's going to be this close. It is about six inches from my fence, from my garage door, and from about, I would say, three feet from the side door entrance, the main entrance to my house. And then it will cut off also the side of my property in the front, in my front yard. So that is the main issue I have. I know I've talked to Patty. She, she says she doesn't want the wall at all. She's asked the zoning board for a, to waive the requirement of building this wall. According to her, the zoning board is what's requiring the wall in the first place, as a backstop to the overflow parking lot that is going to be for Docs. And so that is where this issue comes in. Patty cannot be here today, I've been in contact with her, she's on a flight to some building conference in Los Angeles. But, but yeah, I just wanted to present that to you guys, see if there's anything we can do going forward, and if we can have a meeting, or if anybody has any insight on that. Because currently, I, I've been dealing with that, with a lot of what's been going on, and I'm sorry that it's not been brought up before. We've only been in the house about two months now, so it's pretty new to our attention.
If you just wait and come see me after the meeting, we'll, we'll set something up with you. So just, you waited this long, wait another minute or two.
Absolutely. Appreciate that so much, thank you.
No problem, no problem. Anyone else? So with that, we'll go to Mayor's comments, I don't have any, so we'll need a motion to adjourn. A move by Mr. Current, supported by Mr. Frederick to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night.